Hello, good evening Wakefield. Welcome to the Town Council meeting of March 13th. I call this meeting to order and we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, to take attendance, Councillor Smith Galvin is unable to join us today, but my other six councillors are here. We will go to public engagement. Do we have anyone, Sheri, for public engagement via Zoom?
We have no one's present, yeah.
Great, and can I just ask WCAT, there seems to be a box on Sheri's face. Could we remove that?
It might be better.
No, never, we want to see you. Okay, and nobody in here for public engagement. We will move on to item five, the Scholarship Foundation of Wakefield. We have people already sitting there. Would you introduce yourself and please, for the people over 18, state your address? And then for the people under 18, state your name and what grade you are in in the high school or middle school.
Thank you, my name's Thomas White. Everyone knows me as TJ White. I'm at 6 Williams Street in Wakefield, okay?
And I'm Madison Net. I am in 12th grade at Wakefield High School.
Welcome. Are you going to tell us about an event happening this weekend?
Yes, we are, thank you. So as I just said, my name's TJ White. I'm the Vice President of the Scholarship Foundation of Wakefield, which most people know as TSF of Wakefield. TSF is a registered 501(c)(3) organization that was formed in 1960. And over the past 63 years, TSF has provided over 12,500 financial awards to Wakefield students, assisting them in their pursuit of obtaining higher education. Whether it's higher education in the form of a two-year or four-year college, community college, vocational school, technical school, or graduate degree, these scholarships are available for all years of a student's higher education pursuit. And all it takes is 20 minutes to fill out the form and submit it. That's it. I mean, it's a bargain. I can't believe how good it is. And you guys better all be applying when you get to your senior, you're next. So, on a personal note, my four kids, I have four kids that have gone through the Wakefield school systems, and all four of them have benefited from this program. So, I just wish I had had this type of program when I was growing up and went to college many, many years ago. So, but with the soaring cost of education, college education, the growing burden of student debt, the mission of TSF, it's more essential now than ever. This Saturday, March 18th, we will hold our 43 annual fundraiser, which in the past was known as the Phone-A-Thon. This year was renamed to be called the Annual Appeal. As Vice President, I serve as the Chairperson for this event. Last year, the fundraiser raised $44,000 and was instrumental in allowing us to award more than $780,000 in scholarships to 279 students last year. And we hope to increase that amount this year. The inception-to-date awards that's been given out since 1960 now totals over $15.5 million to Wakefield students, with the projection to go over $16 million after the 2023 scholarships are handed out. Simply amazing, in my opinion, to be honest. As I just mentioned, there were 279 scholarships awarded last year, but we want to give out more. We're constantly reviewing our abilities to reach out to more students to have them apply for scholarships. For example, a few years ago, we introduced a new program that will allow MEKO students, many of whom have been coming to the Wakefield Public School System since they were in kindergarten, the ability to obtain scholarships for all years of their higher education. The first year, we awarded three scholarships to the students and last year it increased to four. So it's a start, and we're hoping that increases every year. Some of you have attended our fundraising, past fundraising events, including the popular sold-out annual golf tournament at Bear Hill Golf Club in September and our recent trivia night challenge. I know I saw a couple of you people there. It was a lot of fun. It was a great time. I was at the bar. The evening was a lot of fun. It was great to be back in person after being held virtually two hours for the past two years. Let me rephrase that. I was at the bar tending it. I was not defusing it. I was, yes. We look forward to next year's event and hope to see you there. All right, as I mentioned, on Saturday, March 18th, we'll hold our 43 annual appeal. With fewer landlines in use, limited access to personal cell phone numbers, and caller ID barriers, traditional phone calls have become a less effective way to reach the Wakefield residents. This year's annual appeal will focus on mailing, on a mailing, as well as a new color flyer included in the March Wakefield Municipal Gas and Light Department bills. The flyers will include important information about our organization, while the mailing will be sent to many Wakefield residents, including new residents and past supporters. We'll also be spreading the word about TSF on Wakefield on social media. Hope you can follow us on Facebook and Instagram during that day and the weeks preceding it. Helping out us again this year is a great group of high school students who serve as the TSF student directors. They will not only benefit from this fundraiser, but they are also helping all future students who are following in their footsteps by keeping this fundraiser going. Without their help, this fundraiser doesn't exist. And we are grateful to have them helping us out this year again. They are amazing people. So, with this, I'd like to introduce Madison Net, President of the TSF Student Directors, who will talk a little bit more about the upcoming appeal.
Thank you, Mr. White. I'm Madison Net, and I'm the current President of the Student Directors of the Scholarship Foundation of Wakefield. This Saturday, March 18th, we expect to have our 26 TSF student directors on social media sharing information about the TSF Annual Appeal fundraiser. Throughout the event, each hour, we will be sharing Instagram and Facebook posts with updates and facts about TSF. We will gather at the Civic Center to assemble this annual appeal mailing, which will include information about TSF as well as details on how to donate to this great cause. We hope that everyone will respond favorably to our most important fundraiser of the entire year and will hope to surpass the $44,000 that we raised at last year's event. On behalf of the Scholarship Foundation of Wakefield, we would like the Town Council to endorse our TSF Annual Appeal fundraiser. And we will also ask that you please designate the week of March 13th through March 18th as the Scholarship Foundation of Wakefield Annual Appeal Week in Wakefield. Thank you very much.
That's it, that's what we got.
Thank you so, thank you so much, yeah.
Thank you.
Councillor Chines, how was that trivia night that you participated in?
So the trivia night was incredible. And I just have to say, you know, not only was it a lot of fun, but I think, you know, being there and supporting a cause like the Scholarship Foundation really, you know, was what made it all that more special. I mean, it just is an incredible, incredible organization. And, you know, when you talk about the numbers of students that you've supported over the years, I mean, it really is inspiring. And this is a resource that doesn't exist in a lot of communities, so. I know I was glad to be there, as was Mr. Mayo, for slightly less time, as it turned out, but.
We had dinner reservations, so we had to tag.
That's what they said.
I joined the group about five years ago. And I've been in a lot of nonprofits in town. This is a special one, there's no doubt about it. I talked to a lot of people from different parts of the town, and they all say, "This town's always been amazing at giving." And here is a living proof of that. You know, this is a great organization, I'm proud to be part of it, so.
And before I ask if my other councillor has a question, so would each of the student directors just mind saying your name and what grade you're in as someone who is a student volunteer? Yeah, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
I'm Caroline, and I'm a senior.
I'm Samantha, and I'm also a senior.
I'm Sophia, and I'm also a senior.
I'm Brandon, and I'm a sophomore.
I'm Andrew, and I'm a sophomore.
I'm Ahmed, and I'm also a sophomore.
Well, welcome. Thank you all for coming, and thank you for spending this week and on Saturday at the Appeal-A-Thon. Do any of my councillors have any questions or comments? Okay, do we have a motion?
We do, Madam Chair. Move to endorse enthusiastically the Scholarship Foundation's annual appeal for 2023 and to declare this week, March 13th through March 18th, 2023, as the Scholarship Foundation Annual Appeal Week.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Six-zero unanimous. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much for your time and appreciation.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Good luck.
Moving on to item number six, fiscal year 2024 budgets. We will start, Kevin will join us, and we will start with the DPW budget. I just want to also congratulate you, Joe. I specifically asked Steve last week if you were not going to be here and enjoying paternity leave, and Steve said that you likely would rather be here.
I am here. I hope everything's going well at home, but I'll find out in a little bit, I'm sure.
Hopefully, she's not watching, because I just thought throwing right on the.
If they are, it's big news when Dad's on television, especially YouTube, so it's all good.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Town Councillors. I'll do a quick review of the DPW budget, the operating budget, water and sewer, water division, sewer division, then open it up for questions for Joe, if there are anything specific. The FY '24 DPW operating budget is being increased $236,439 over the current fiscal year. The increase in personal services is $185,684, which includes contractual and negotiated increases. All contracts are settled, and there are no new positions. Under purchase of services, the increase is $41,585. Under the administration division, there's an increase of $5,000 for equipment maintenance and software licenses. Under the engineering division, there's a $15,000 increase, again, equipment maintenance and software. Under building, there's a net increase of $21,585. I do want to note that we did increase the offset from the Civic Center by a little over $9,000. Materials and supplies under fleet increased $9,170. This was for motor fuel increase. The total budget for fiscal '24 is $6,979,569, with $6,871,999 coming from the tax levy, $98,570 coming from available funds. The snow and ice budget is level funded at $850,000. The sewer enterprise budget increased for fiscal '24 $196,289 to $9,344,988. The major changes here are personal services increased $57,067. Under purchase of services, there was an increase of $44,029. There was an increase in the natural gas and electric line item of $4,029, and a new line item, pump rehab, for $40,000. Under intergovernmental, we also increased the MWRA assessment $25,818. For fiscal '24, water enterprise, the increase was $1,025,221. The total budget, $7,229,715. A couple of major changes in this budget, increase in personal services, $75,443, and a large increase to the intergovernmental line item of $718,773, which is for the MWRA assessment.
Okay, so I, Joe Conway, Director of Public Works. With me tonight is our fantastic business manager, Anne White. A lot of what I had prepared to say is actually going to overlap with Kevin, but I was going to go through just a couple of things and provide a little bit more detail on it, and then we'll open it up for conversation. So I'll start with the tax levy side and then get into the enterprises. But as Kevin had mentioned, most of the increases on the tax levy side are contractual service related. Like he had said, all of our bargaining agreements are in place, no new positions. Any of the lines for overtime and things like that have adjusted simply just to meet what the new rate is for the fiscal year. And then there is also a small increase in police details in our highway division budget. Just one thing interestingly to note, that is one of the areas we cut for COVID that is still below pre-COVID levels with the work in the busy spring and summer that we're anticipating this year. We need to increase that because we're going to be out on roads that are going to require a little help from our friends in public safety. In purchase of services, as Kevin had mentioned, the most, the majority of this is license-based, you know, things on the administrative side. And then in engineering, the biggest one being AutoCAD. Every single project that we do to get shovel-ready has to go through that. And we have six people on staff that are using that designing the things that we're putting out in construction. Electricity and natural gas, so this is essentially a multi-year average that we use to get a baseline of our typical kilowatt and CCF consumption. Then we reach out to the Gas and Light Department and get a conversation going with them to see where they feel like their rates are going to fall for the year, and we take a conservative estimate to that. We basically follow the same principle with materials and supplies. And with fuel oil, diesel fuel and gasoline, we take the same approach. So we take a consumption baseline, and then we multiply that by what the federal government is projecting for fuel and oil prices and come up with a budgetary number for that. In snow and ice, one question that came up this year, and I have to apologize, I don't know if we've ever explained it. When you're looking at this budget presented, you'll see something called the Director's Request and then the Town Administrator's Request. We're supportive of not changing that this year. I feel like, knock on wood, every year, I reach out to Mr. Mayo and say that, you know, maybe this is the year we need to start thinking about this, and I'm pleasantly surprised at the end, so I hope that this follows suit. But what you'll see in the Director's Request is we have a lot of assumptions that we take off of averages. We go back about two and a half decades and look at how many events that we've been out, how many inches of precipitation we get, and then we apply the law of averages to that. And for transparency, we say, you know, this is what your average winter, for lack of a better term, may cost, you know, should that come. Since about 2018, we've been in very good shape with that, and I hope that that continues for a very long time. I just wanted to clarify that, because I don't know if anybody ever, ever has. Water and sewer, so as Kevin mentioned, you know, contractual increases, a couple of other things like that. One thing you will notice in this, our maturing debt line is up. So at the rate-setting hearing, definitely, if not in these meetings, either myself or someone from our group, we've been talking about inflow and infiltration loans from the MWRA. And we were using them aggressively to take advantage of this program, because you get a million dollars' worth of work essentially for 25% on the dollar. We got to the end, and the only option left for us up until this budget came out was a complete loan. Luckily, they put another phase in front of us and were able to take advantage again of that great offset in the payback. So we'll talk about that a little bit more when we get into warrant articles, but this maturing debt increase would be to take that payment on. It's basically 0% for 10 years, and we get $1.30 million worth of work for 25% on the dollar. So in water, as Kevin mentioned, our big increase this year is related to our MWRA assessment. There's a few things at play with that this year. Two big factors, really. There's a flow-based component to that and then a financial component to it. So as we get our wholesale rate from the MWRA, they're up about 4% as this year was going on. Let me backtrack with that. This assessment is essentially the previous year's calendar year flow through Wakefield. So this is for calendar year, January 1st to December 31st, 2022. Just like the water meters at your home, what comes into Wakefield passes through a meter. We get billed an assessment on that. So gallons in, times their rate, and this is what it is. This year, you know, the year is shaping up good. We had a warm, wet, excuse me, warm, dry summer. When those things type generally happen, you'll hear us talk about this, especially in June when we're going through our rate-setting. Consumption tends to increase. That was certainly the case this year. Another thing that we noticed that was happening this year is, believe it or not, our baseline consumption is actually growing. So as Wakefield grows, we've noticed by pulling reports through our meter data that accounts with meters are one and a half inches or above, which is generally outside of the 7,000 residential units that are listed in the one-inch-and-below category. That consumption is actually growing throughout the years, and I believe in two years, it's doubled. So our baseline is starting to change as Wakefield becomes bigger and more of these developments come online. And last, but certainly not least, in quarter two, as part of our regulatory testing for PFOS, we were delivered a result for the first time that was higher than where we previously had been. It's important to note, so at no time were we ever in any violation. We were not in a situation where we had a public health emergency. But Massachusetts has one of the strictest thresholds for compliance related to that nationwide, and we have always been under the 20-part-per-trillion threshold. And just to put that into perspective, so each quarter, your testing for PFOS chemicals can't exceed 20 parts per trillion. A part per trillion is one grain of sand in an Olympic-sized swimming pool full of sand. Generally, all of our data, both raw water and finished water from Crystal Lake, averaged between nine and 12, given about that area. And then come July, we found that we received a test result that was higher than the 20 parts, and we shut down. So this is something that we take very seriously. For us, manufacturing water is a lot like medicine. Once a doctor gives medicine, it's virtually impossible to take that back. Once we pump out into the distribution system, we treat that the same way. We immediately engage the DEP, which provides oversight for that for us, and we worked hand-in-hand with them to isolate, identify, and try to correct whatever the issue was that caused that test to spike. Unfortunately, that process took about six months, and we weren't given the green light for them to turn back on until February. Fortunately for us, Wakefield's primary source of water is connected to some of the best water in the country. So we have the option of turning off and going to MWRA, which is essentially non-detect, which we chose to exercise while we figured this problem out. So we got all the way to the end of the six months. We probably missed the opportunity to pump somewhere between 60 and 80 million gallons additionally out of the lake and relied on MWRA. Our report that just came back is well below the threshold that we need to be in. And for all intents and purposes, we were not able to pinpoint anything specifically that caused that. Unfortunately for us, that's not the type of test where we can ask for, resubmit, and contest that. We do have some of those options with materiological exams. Outside of that, we will see one other thing on the water side that I just wanted to mention tonight. Our Harts Hill Water Tank that we've talked about this time last year is actually going to be under construction this summer. One of the things that we were hoping to do was to put that out to bond and stretch the payment out as long as we could while the interest rates were low, to make it as absorbable as possible. With the uncertainty of the Fed and some other things that were happening, we noticed as time went on, those rates were starting to tick up. We did have $2 million available to us from the MWRA interest-free, and we exercised that option. So front-loaded our payment a little bit more than we wanted to, but in the long run, it saved us, or will save us, a heck of a lot of interest. So that line is up $136,000 to take that payment on to. So I know that was quick, and again, I didn't want to completely overhash anything that Kevin already did, but we're more than happy to discuss anything or answer any questions.
That's great. Anne, did you have anything to add, or you're?
Oh, my part's coming, don't worry.
Okay, okay. And then Steve, did you just want to ask anything before?
No, I just wanted to say that I'm very pleased with the budget that the Director brought in. You know, coming in at 3.5% overall on the tax levy is very good. Always one that I, you know, a lot of moving parts here, but they do a great job, and it's a, it's a great department, and Joe and Anne are fabulous, as are a lot of their other staff, so. No, I fully support it, and I'm very mean not to give him his snow and ice money, but that's too bad.
I hope you never need it.
And Councillor Jambroski as the liaison.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Joe, and Anne, and Kevin. I had the opportunity to spend time with Joe and Anne, and I actually kept them later than office hours too, so I apologize. We had a very good discussion. I went through this budget in a very thorough way with them. I think they've done an excellent job. To pick up on the PFOS piece, which I think is an important thing to raise with folks, this truly was an anomaly. Our numbers are well below that 20 on a regular and sustained basis. And there could be any number of explanations for it, including perhaps an issue with the lab. We don't know. It could be any number of things, but there's nothing to suggest that there's any bigger problem or trend here of any sort. But it does certainly mean that we relied more on MWRA water supply for that period of time, which, you know, is a cost consideration there. But we're more than making up for it now. Steve, who is with DPW, also works with Pumping the Water, has done a phenomenal job, he and his team, to make sure that we are pumping water at an incredible, impressive, was it 1 point?
Friday, they pumped a million, too.
Yeah, 1.2 million in a day. So we've, so we've really more than made up for that. And we'll continue to work that way. But our water quality continues to remain excellent. Some of the best, you know, drinking water you can have in the country, candidly. And I think it's a testament to the leadership of the department. The, being able to have the budget come in where it does, which is basically just contractual obligations really driving this more than anything, not having new hires and being able to keep all of their expenses under control, I think is a very positive thing. And I was also encouraged, there had been some debate, but they've decided they're going to empty the water tank on Harts Hill before they demolish it, which is going to be helpful, given the alternative. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councillor McLean.
Welcome. I had asked a few questions preliminarily, and I'd just like to follow up on those, but also maybe just expand in terms of general knowledge of how this whole water business works. Joe, is it a three-year average of use that the MWRA uses? In terms of, you know, if we have a three-year average that goes up, then we get billed higher? Is that the flow portion? You said there's a flow portion and a cost portion.
So on the water end, it's pretty simple. They go through their process like we do to figure out what their revenue, what their budgets are, and then they make a revenue decision based on that. For water, we're constantly paying for the year that just happened. So the previous fiscal year is metered. Each community has metered connections to it, and they simply bill you a flow portion. So whatever that number is that gets, you know, taken in by the town, times their rate, and that's our assessment. So there is no multi-year average or things like that.
Has the rate changed, for example? Is that the 4% you were talking about? Because when I go to their website, I see it's a number something like $4,102 per a million gallon based on 2020 numbers. I mean, does that number, has that number gone up?
It did. So that, that went up, it's multiple decimals, but it's 3.9xx, so it's approximately 4% there. And then on the sewer end, it's up 3.5? I think the average comes up to 3.1.
And last year, we were talking about, you know, if we have a wet season, then we don't bill as much, but we had the reverse. We had a drought, so our revenue is actually up on the water side, correct? I mean, I had gotten figures from you. We're billing ahead almost $700,000 more, March 10th this year versus March 17th. I mean, I had gotten figures from you. We're billing ahead of almost seven hundred thousand more March tenth this year versus March tenth next year, or last year.
Yeah, I apologize for that. Coming a little late to you today, Monday, Monday morning, you know how that gets. But we're in quarter, quarter two?
Quarter three.
Quarter three, so we're finished with two.
So we'll bill our final one in April, our final billing cycle in April.
Right. So do you have a projection on what the revenue will be? Because I think in the past, you had indicated to me we needed fifteen million, but it sounds to me like we may be over that.
So we need close to sixteen million, but yes, we will, if all goes well, we will be ahead of that when we bill out in April.
Okay, and if we have a snow and ice, this year anyway, with the non-winter or semi-non-winter we've had, would that money?
You are jinxing it. I just started to interrupt. You are.
There's a storm coming.
Jinxing it for all of us right now.
Can't blame me for the one that's coming.
Giving Ann and Joe heart palpitations and Kevin.
If there's money that goes back, does it go back to the town or does it go back to your budget?
I would love for it to come back to us at Public Works, but that would go to Kevin and Mr. Mayo and the general fund.
And there's, so there wasn't any, I understand, I mean, PFAS is in everybody right now. But I understand that there was, there was never an isolation of what actually happened there?
No, and one of the things we did is we tested every point, you know, from beginning to end to figure out if we could isolate and identify it, because we would have corrected it immediately. Our raw water, which is basically, you know, whatever exists in Crystal Lake, believe it or not, in that state is underneath what we need to be. Our finished water is that, for whatever reason, I mean, common sense or, you know, deductive reasoning, once you get passed so many different, you know, ideas and recommendations from DEP, you start thinking about laboratory contamination, but we'll never know.
Right. I'd ask a specific question or two on a couple of specific accounts. One, I think, was the thirty-one, one oh one, I think it was, the hundred fifty thousand. We had spent about ten through mid-year. You had indicated that we have more billing coming in. Do you know the amount of that billing?
I think I sent it, the message to you, we have above forty thousand dollars outstanding.
Right. And you indicated anything left over would go to infrastructure? I was curious about that, because isn't infrastructure billed somewhere else?
So we're talking about the water enterprise. So one of the things.
Stormwater, I think it was. Was it not?
Oh, so there were both of them. Related to the water end, at least, that is something that we would do like gates and different things with. It's also, that allotment of money is also there if we have simultaneous jobs going on and we just can't clone ourselves to be into places at one time. On the stormwater end, it's very cyclical. So we actually have a lot of projects that are encumbered. That account, we've done a lot of things with Lake Quinapawit. But like you had mentioned, we do have some things coming up in the spring related to testing. One of the things that we have to do is drainage records, for whatever reason, industry-wide, especially in New England, are relatively poor. And we need to go out and find out all the missing links and connect more of the dots and get them mapped. What we want to know is if we're taking surface water from a public road, where is that depositing into via wetland or whatever that might be? So that we can test that and make sure that there aren't any environmental impacts that are being caused there.
So just to get to my bottom-line point, which is, is the one fifty overbudgeted or is the one fifty a number that we should leave there?
I recommend leaving it there for now. We will potentially get some other permit changes. It seems like every reiteration of the permit or every new version of that seems to get a little bit more restrictive. And the better that the testing gets across the board, the more strict our compliance is going to end up being, which unfortunately will probably equate to a cost.
Okay, thanks. And you guys are always great. I ask direct questions. I get to ask direct answers. I really appreciate it.
We do too. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I miss just this, getting used to this hybrid world. We have a member of FinCom who is the liaison to DPW. That's Stefan. Hello.
Hey there. Good evening. So I actually reviewed the budgets with Joe twice this past month, over the past month. We went through each line item, line item by line item. It's a very solid budget. They had answers for all the questions that we had. And, you know, we stand behind the budget as a DPW subcommittee.
Thank you very much. Fellow Councillors, Counsel Daney?
I just have a couple of small questions, but fence repair, nine thousand, and then sidewalk repair, fifteen thousand is budgeted. Is that enough?
I believe the two accounts you're looking at are for supplies.
Oh, supplies, okay. How much do we usually spend on sidewalk repairs?
Excluding the capital work. So we have a lot of ARPA work that's going to be happening with sidewalks. If anybody thought that last year was busy, this year is going to be even more. I could tell you, or it could go off the top of my head, I think we have fifty-five thousand within the highway budget for sidewalk work. That's for help. A lot of it.
That's for repairs.
Correct. A lot of it our staff can do. So they'll be doing it simultaneously with bringing other entities and things like that.
And then if a resident has like a sidewalk that they think needs to be repaired, that there's, you know, frostries or whatever, what should they do and what is typically the response for that?
So any resident with any inquiry for any requests for service, no matter what it is, I would say get in touch with us. You can find us through our page on the website. What we would do is take in a request for service. That would get, you know, triaged by folks inside. Every single time that comes in, unless it's something that's not, obviously not ours, sometimes we'll get requests, you know, a streetlight might be out that we'll then share with our friends at the light department. But anytime that happens, someone will physically go out and look at that, depending on what it is. You know, if it's something that's critical in nature, a safety issue, it gets addressed immediately. If not, depending on, you know, situationally what's going on, it'll be added into the queue. And then as our crews are working through the neighborhoods and doing different things, they'll address all of that. The goal is to get to absolutely everything with the most serious and important first and then follow up.
And what can, what is typically the lead time? So say somebody calls up and there's a problem, and then they call you, you look at it, you deem it as, we should probably fix this. What is the expectation for the timeframe?
If it is something that is a potential for safety, immediate. So it'll start to get addressed immediately. It'll either get excavated and prepped, or, you know, it'll be made safe or at least isolated until we can get there. If not, it depends on what it is. You know, we could get a call for a sidewalk on Lowell Street, if someone says this is a broken-up piece, we'll put a fix on that. And then also, you know, we have the capital program coming in behind it. So it's tough to say it depends on where it is, but generally, we want to make sure that at least the citizen's request is addressed within seventy-two hours. And then from that point in time, you know, if it's something we'll do in the season, we want to. Every once in a while, we may have to defer. It really depends on what we see out there. And then we could have all intentions of being out here on the Hart Street or Farm Street and then find out that something pressing came and then now we have to pivot. But even if it's deferred, it's never lost. It might just take a little bit longer.
Okay.
The goal is one construction season for the most part.
And I was just going to add, they can get, they can come by and see us, they can call, they can email us at dpw@wakefieldma.us. They can also fill out on the website, there's a little square that says how to put in a request. They can click on that and put in a request. And they can also find people's email addresses within the DPW, and they can email people directly.
They may even say Ann making appearance herself.
All right, that's fantastic. That's, and this is a question that I have just because you're in front of me, and it's, nobody's ever asked me about this, but I've always, I grew up with pavement, paved sidewalks. And here we have all concrete sidewalks. Like, why do you choose one material over the other?
I would like to say it's all aesthetics, unfortunately, a couple of things related to concrete. It's very cost prohibitive. So we could pave, you know, a particular section of sidewalk in asphalt two or three times for what it costs us to do concrete. Depending on where it is in town, there's also some environmental things that we need to think of. So salt and concrete, like kryptonite and Superman, they don't mix well together at all. So if we have, you know, elevation issues or things like that, where there may be the chance of the salt interacting with it, we'll probably go to asphalt. Generally, if you're in an area like high industrial zones like downtown, anything around schools or things with like high walkability, our preference is to be concrete there. And then asphalt, because it's a little bit more softer, has less of an urban feel, you know, like your residential neighborhoods. But it depends too. So certain neighborhoods you could go through and an in-kind replacement, everything that exists there is asphalt. We're going to follow suit. There's other sections of town, like Emerson Street's a great example. Everything on Emerson Street, the majority of it is concrete. We'd probably be more inclined to keep that in-kind, because it's existed like that way for decades.
Good, thank you. Oh, engineering department. So I know that, I didn't know that we had as many engineers that we did. I'd love to, not now, but at some point, to have the engineering department maybe come in and talk a little bit about what they do and what their role is. That might be, might be helpful if we could plan that.
We can, I'll speak for myself, but I'm very confident that they would be overjoyed to come in and show.
Yeah, good, good.
If anybody wants to go on a field trip, we could do that too. So we love, we love talking shop and teaching and learning, so absolutely.
That's good. I could probably learn a lot, so that would be helpful.
Anytime.
Okay, thank you.
I think, once we get past budget season, I think that would be great just to have that specific department come. They do so much, and as, you know, ARPA funds and there's more that they'll be doing, and so kind of an overview would be really helpful. But after the budget. Counsel Vincent?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Joe actually had a deal with two newbies this week, his infant child at home and me, going through a DPW budget for the first time. I appreciate your patience. I appreciate the responses you gave to all my email questions and meeting with me this morning to go over sewer rates with the MWR preliminary assessments and even the town administrator, learn something new about sewer rates. I also wanted to especially compliment you and Ann for putting together this synopsis, this multi-page synopsis. That really helped me when I started to go through your slides, that I had this as a reference guide. I haven't always seen something like this, but this was very helpful with going through your slides. But thank you again for your patience in answering all my questions.
Thank you.
Counsel Chimes?
Thank you. First of all, thank you for the thorough presentation and, you know, echo Counsel Vincent's points about the materials that go with it. I mean, this is a complicated budget for those of us who don't live in the world that you all live in. I'm constantly amazed at how much time and energy as a community we spend on moving water from place to place, whether it's, you know, drinking water or stormwater or whatever. And, you know, the budget definitely reflects the complexity around all the work that you do. So I appreciate you making it accessible to us. Couple of things that I wanted to ask about. First, just a comment, and this kind of piggybacks off of Counsel Daney's question about the sidewalks. One of the things I did notice is that in prior years, we had a couple of years where we weren't actually spending the full sidewalk repair budget. And I, just given the feedback I hear from residents of the community, given what I see as I'm in town, I'm certain it's not due to lack of need. And so just a request that we continue to remain vigilant on that. I mean, that is a budget that I want to make sure we're spending in full, because I do believe that the need is absolutely there. Obviously, we've got some kind of capital work as well that will solve some of those issues. But just want to highlight that as something to make sure we keep an eye on for the future. A couple of questions around PFAS. And the first is, I thought I had heard, and I might be conflating a couple of things, that there was a chance that the state was going to actually increase the PFAS standards, or I should say, make them more difficult to obtain. Is that something, am I remembering that correctly, or do we have any indication as to where the state may be going in terms of their tolerance levels?
So so far, I don't have anything that I've seen in writing. But that conversation is certainly happening in our circles, engineering, water, that whole world. If Massachusetts is going to do anything, I would say, we're assuming that as the testing gets better. Because one of the things is, this is, to take Crystal Lake, for example, this is the water we've been drinking since the Quinapawit Water Company started in nineteen hundred. Whenever PFAS existed and got into that, that source, it's been the same water we've been having this whole time. The thing that's changing is now they can test to levels that are, you know, so much more, you know, minute. So I would assume that at some point in time, if the threshold, so federally, the threshold is seventy parts per trillion. Massachusetts is twenty, which is the strictest. It's, right now, there's a host, I don't even know off the top of my head, all of the different chemicals classified as PFAS. The regulated contaminants that were most concentrated are six specific ones. I could give you the scientific names, but I promise you, if I try to pronounce them, it's going to be bad.
I'll absolutely retain them if you gave it to me.
I could totally, I could see something where you may see that threshold drop below twenty parts per trillion. If not, they may say instead of the PFAS six, it could be the PFAS ten, or it could be the PFAS twelve. In the event that that was to change, that would be communicated us through the DEP. We're hearing the same things you are, expecting that that's probably likely outcome, but we haven't seen anything to indicate that that is absolutely going to happen yet.
And so you mentioned sort of, thank you, I appreciate the context on that, and of course, it's so much more complicated than, you know, just a number. You mentioned sort of for Crystal Lake, you know, we generally test in that sort of eight to nine to ten to twelve kind of range. For the water that we get from MWRRA, do we have a, I'm sure, do you have a sense as to where we generally test out in terms of PFAS levels?
It's classified as non-detect.
Okay.
So they cannot detect it, at least with the testing that's currently available in their reservoirs. So it's essentially zero.
So then sort of playing that out, you know, as we think about the Crystal Lake issue, it's not that there, it would seem to suggest there's not something in sort of the water main infrastructure in town that's adding to that. It's something from the source that has that slightly higher level or?
It could be. I mean, it could be a whole bunch of things. They say things like Teflon tapes, different plastics, all of it can, when Counsel Dombrowski and our group were talking, the gentleman that actually does the testing for us, when he does do the testing, wears complete cotton. He won't use soaps. He won't do anything like that. He wears canvas sneakers to make sure that there's no man-made substance that could possibly.
Incidental contamination.
Exactly. So they attribute it to that. Firefighting foam was a big source of it. So especially down the South Shore towards like the Cape. There are communities where some of the airports are down that way that are really hit bad with it. There's a little bit of it, I think, in a report that came out in Saugus. I would imagine that Linfield has a little bit up by Camp Curtis, just because some of the military activity there. But to pinpoint exactly where that came from, we don't know. Posted different things.
If I could just add, I don't think Joe's doing total justice here. We're talking about, he literally doesn't shower. He doesn't use anything on his hands. He has no, like, no contact with.
I'm glad I don't go with him when he goes.
Plastics, I mean, it is, it is intense what he does. He wears like a pair of chucks and, you know, like you said, all cotton clothing. So he is as pure a sampler as you could possibly imagine.
Unfortunately, the field trip won't happen that day.
I could take your word for that one.
That commitment though, that he was describing, it was incredible, like the lengths that he goes to to make sure that, you know, we have as pure a test as we can have, and it's a testament.
And rightfully so, it should be, because this is a problem that a lot of communities are spending tens of millions of dollars on to fix that don't have any options. So we're very fortunate to have what we have and be in the position that we're in, so we want to preserve that as long as we can.
So I guess to that and then too, and again, I absolutely appreciate the context. Maybe not so much that he doesn't shower for your purposes when he shows up. Is there anything else that we can do around sort of the water supply that we control? So obviously, we have a great deal of confidence in the MWRRA supply. Is there anything else that we should be looking at doing to protect sort of Crystal Lake as a water source? I know we, you know, we do have it sort of as posted, no trespassing around Crystal Lake. I suspect that that doesn't always get honored by folks in town. You know, are there contaminants coming into the water supply from different sources that we should look at remediation? Anything from that perspective that we should be thinking about?
Nothing that we're aware of as far as being introduced by, you know, someone that may be taking a walk through the woods or things like that, at least to a scale that would be alarming. Every once in a while, you know, our staff is constantly walking the grounds, taking a look at things. the grounds, taking a look at things. Um, you know, they may see that some kids built a fort or something, but, um, nothing troubling to this point. Uh, there are some things we're looking at, uh, especially with stormwater and engineering, uh, about some water, watershed bylaws potentially, uh, or some other things too. Uh, just like Lake Guanapowit, we would prefer not to have, you know, the abutters, uh, if they can use fertilizers that would impact the lake. Um, so there are some things that we're starting to work on. We're not quite there yet, but the goal, um, as you are hinting towards, is to make sure we're as ironclad as we can be, you know, as long as the means to get there are reasonable and, you know, actually able to be accomplished.
Great. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments?
Do I have a motion?
Sure. Uh, Madam Chair, move to, uh, accept the fiscal year 2024 budget for the Department of Public Works as, as presented.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye, six, zero. Thank you. Moving on to the articles.
Yes. Um, so the request, uh, in front of the council tonight is for three Warren articles. Um, we tried to keep, we have a lot. We're very fortunate, as I mentioned earlier, that, um, we kind of have an idea of what our spring and summer are gonna look like when some of the decisions were made related to ARPA. So we've tried to keep this list, uh, as manageable and simple as it can be. Um, I'll start quickly with our yearly favorite, uh, eminent domain for a dollar. Um, this essentially is insurance policy for us. Um, it will allow this board, uh, to take land conveyances and easements, uh, should we need them, uh, throughout our day-to-day. We hardly ever use it. Um, I can't think of a time where we have used it off the top of my head. It may go as far back as Lonnie Island. Um, but we put it in every year. Um, better to have and not need than to need and not have. So, um, I'll kick it over to Ann. Ann, this is refuse recycling.
So, uh, the refuse, recycling and yard waste budget is, uh, two million, three hundred and seventy doll, um, three, sorry, two million, three hundred and seventy thousand, seven hundred and forty-seven dollars. Um, pretty straightforward. The overall increase is, uh, three percent with, uh, contractual and, um, CBA, uh, obligations. Um, there is a new added line item, uh, for thirty thousand dollars for equipment maintenance. Uh, that would be to maintenance for the street sweeper and the new screener that we purchased, uh, last year. Um, also, uh, we had some help, uh, this year with the mattresses. Um, so the mattress, uh, program started in November. So far, year-to-date, a hundred and one mattresses have gone through, uh, hands-up, um, taking them out of the waste stream, which is great. Um, where the bulk stickers, um, where, uh, FY twenty-two, we g- generated about seventy-five thousand dollars worth of revenue. Um, what I find amazing is since the bulk stickers went in, the number of bulk items has been cut in half. So it's been out at the curb as half of what, uh, w- was there the year before.
What's happening to the other half?
So, um, I think a lot of people are going to alternative solutions, like, uh, buy-nothing Wakefield. I think they're donating. I think events like April, uh, eighth, when, um, Representative Garabedian's runner thing, I think a lot of people will bring items to that. They did last year. I mean, I think people are really going with the reuse, you know, putting it out there free, come get it. Um, I think that's where a lot are going.
That's great. That's, it's, it's working. Did you say a hundred and one mattresses?
Yes.
And we just started that program?
Uh, well, November, but our first pickup was in December. So, so we're, um, we're actually pigging back, back in with, uh, Malden. So the truck comes here first, picks up ours, and then goes there, which has helped us with, they wanted a forty mattress minimum, which is, I, like, it's hard to know who is getting a new mattress this year. Uh, so it's been very helpful to piggyback with them, so we don't have to worry about filling the truck.
That's great. Um, Counselor Dombrowski?
Can I just ask, I know when, when this came up, we had talked about the concern about, you know, items ending up like in the Saugus River, you know, and things like that. Are we finding that there is, um, any more, um, you know, like clutter or, you know, unauthorized, illegal, um, dumping since November, or has that not really changed?
I, from my perspective, and maybe correct me if, if you see it wrong, no. Um, y- you get that call every once in a while. It's kind of the nature of the business that we're in from time to time, unfortunately, but, um, it's not like that waste bin happened and then all of a sudden we were littered with it. Um, so luckily, that wasn't the case.
So really no, no, no discernible increase then?
No. And I think the trash supervisor's been very helpful. If he sees mattresses out and it's not on a day we're doing a mattress pickup or that week, he'll go and knock on the door and try to explain to them how that works.
Gotcha. That's great.
That's, knock on wood, like, successful. Like, it, it's working how we wanted to.
Yes.
But I think it's a wood table. Um, um, uh, um, Ann, can you just explain a little bit more about April eighth and what Rep. Libbergairveian does? Because I went last year and I, it was non-stop people. People really were appreciating the opportunity to recycle things that you can't normally recycle or, you know, shouldn't throw out. Um, so people were showing up with old TVs, old printers. Um, can you just, I di- I didn't know it had been scheduled, so can you talk about it?
Yeah, and this year, they actually added mattresses to it. So if people have a way to get their mattress down, uh, it's only thirty-five dollars to get rid of a mattress. So hopefully, if people can put on the top of their car and get it down there, they'll save a few dollars. But, yeah, there's a, um, a lot of different things. There'll be pa- uh, paper shredding this year. Um, Republic will be there from, uh, ten to twelve doing paper shredding. So, uh, people can bring a box for free, copy your size box for free. Um, they'll also take, uh, furniture. Um, there's a fifteen-dollar charge, but you can, you know, if you have a kitchen table that you'd like to get reused, you can bring it down. It will go to, um, Habitat for Humanity and they'll get those. So there's a lot of, I think it's still developing, but a lot of good things will be, be there.
That's great. Um, Counselor Chines?
Uh, ju- just a quick question, sort of a little tangentially related to this, but do you know where we are in terms of, uh, curbside compost adoption, uh, with the Black Earth program?
So, uh, we're at four hundred and twenty-three, I think, when I looked this afternoon. Um, so I did talk to Connor Miller, who he actually is the owner. Um, he explained to me that a lot of times during the winter, there is a dip.
Yep.
Because we had, we had closed in on like the four-thirty mark, and so a few drop off. But he said usually they'll pick back up in the spring. He said some people do six-month, um, subscriptions and they'll just do it during the summer months. They may be away in the winter or whatever the case is. Um, we still have, uh, since we started the program and purchased the, um, starter kits, we've given out, um, two hundred and eighty-seven. So we have, um,
That's great.
like thirteen left to go that we still have, so.
So another, the best part about those starter kits is Aunt, Ann has secured the grant. Uh, every time we've re-upped for that, it's been zero cost to the town.
That's wonderful.
So.
Well, and it sounds like we still have some opportunity for households to participate.
Absolutely.
Hundred percent.
Great. Get, before the thirteen are gone, get your, get your kit.
Yes. And then, uh, another program that's going on now is the rain barrel. Um, so that'll be the day before, the Thursday. People can pick up their rain barrels on the, um, seventh of April. Um, we, uh, tw- we're taking twenty dollars off to make it more affordable, so it's down to sixty-nine dollars this year, and we're using our grant money for, for those also.
Great. I, I should say, just, um, uh, you know, it's a kind of interesting coincidence. I actually had a textile pickup at my house today, and so I appreciate the fact, and I, I hope people know this, but for textiles, rather than disposing them, if you don't want to take them somewhere, you can actually arrange a pickup through the, the vendor that we use.
Simple recycling, yes.
Very convenient, very easy, and, uh, certainly, uh, I appreciated not having to
Yeah.
take all those bags somewhere.
Any other questions about the Warren article, articles?
I just, I do have one more to discuss. I'm sorry. Um, so third and final, uh, is the borrowing for inflow and infiltration. So, uh, that's what I mentioned. We were talking about the sewer. Um, so the total amount would be one million, three hundred and ten thousand dollars, uh, to initiate a borrowing through the MWRA. Uh, seventy-five percent of that number, uh, will be, uh, free to the town via grant, and we will be repaying twenty-five percent, uh, over a ten-year period, interest-free.
Any questions or comments about that? It's a very good deal. Yes, thank you.
Hopefully they continue.
Um, do we have, each has to be separate? Look at that.
All right. Uh, Madam Chair, we'll move to, uh, approve the eminent domain refuse, recycling, yard waste and inflow and infiltration, uh, borrowing articles as presented by Mr. Conway.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye, six, zero unanimous. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, um, Joe was gonna hang around for i- item nine. So, given that, I want to get back in the good graces with his wife's family, Mrs. Conway, if we could move him up.
Yes, let's continue talking about, um, water. So that is fine. Um, item nine, Town Council Joint Representation Concerning Provisions of Water with Linfield.
Yeah. Um, Madam Chair, uh, the towns of, uh, Linfield and Wakefield have been in discussion for some time with the Linfield Center Water District, uh, about a plan whereby Wakefield would furnish water to the district through pipes in Linfield's public ways. Now, this would require an intermunicipal agreement among the two towns plus the water district. Um, I represent, as you know, both towns. The water district is separately represented. Uh, we have faced issues like this before, such as the rail trail and the development of the old Colonial Golf property, which required that, uh, some fairly innocuous legal work be done, uh, on behalf of both towns. And in order to keep me employed in the sense of, uh, you know, not being disbarred and out of jail, it's important that both boards, the Board of Selectmen in Linfield and the Town Council in Wakefield authorize their respective chairs to sign, uh, what I've styled here as a determination and consent, basically saying that it's necessary for me as part of my job as the Town Council in Wakefield to do this in, even though it involves another town. Um, and that you have been fully apprised of the fact that it is technically a conflict, but, uh, in my view anyway, uh, it does not, uh, present any, uh, likelihood of, um, a problem for either community. If I ever perceive a divergence of interests, I'll let you know immediately and withdraw on behalf of both communities, and, uh, both communities can find other, uh, special counsel. I think that's extremely unlikely. Again, fairly innocuous work, uh, and it would be a shame to have to pay somebody to represent Wakefield in this matter.
Uh, Steve, do you want to add anything?
No, I, I think that, um, you know, we've, uh, Tom laid it out very well. Uh, I have no, certainly no problem with that at all. Um, well, the intermunicipal agreement, actual one will be coming back to us. That's what he's asking, uh, permission to draft, and then, um, Town Council will go through that. This is a great deal that, um, I think in the November, October, November was presented?
We, uh, so we actually presented this in May of twenty twenty-one.
It's, it's, time flies.
And it, it took, uh, because of part of the project, we have to span, um, a bridge in the Mass DOT right-of-way. Uh, it took quite a while to get them to sign off on our intended project. Um, we're here now. Um, when this was presented last time to date, with the exception of Tom's involvement, nothing has materially changed since you've seen this, um, except we'll be working with Tom and instead of, um, you know, impartial counsel.
And, and again, I have no issue with Tom doing this at all. Saves us money, saves Linfield money.
He loves Wakefield a little bit more.
I think he does. Well, he won't, he won't admit that, but, you know.
And, and this is good for the water department?
A hundred percent.
Yeah.
So this, um, uh, for dynamics and water quality for us, uh, it's excellent. The other thing is, uh, we have a line that runs under the one-twenty-eight highway that is off, uh, because it's leaking somewhere. Um, this will allow us to never have to think about a capital project, uh, in that area, uh, and utilize this as a means to restore some pressure that we are now, um, diminishing on Bay State Road. So it's a fantastic, for us, you know, both operationally, um, financially, there's a component to it, uh, as well. So it's a win-win.
That sounds great. Any other comments? Um, Counselor McLean and then Counselor Dombrowski?
Just for clarity, um, having not been here in twenty twenty-one, today we're just voting for the joint representation. Um, is the, is the other, the deal itself something that will come before us at a later date with some detail? Because it's all brand-new to me.
Oh, yeah. An intermunicipal agreement has to be, uh, authorized and signed by the Boards of Selectmen of both towns. So, uh, I will be back before the Town Council once I've drafted that.
Right.
Laying the parameters out.
In the merits of it, Steve, we would consider it a later date.
We can, we, we did consider them before, but we'll, we'll do a re-presentation.
Okay.
I can, um, send you all that information too, so at least you can get up to speed.
I was reading some materials today and it's just, it's a lot to.
It is a lot to digest, yeah.
Digest and, uh, you know, when, when you're already missing the college hoops on Sunday.
Counselor Dombrowski?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I was speaking with, um, Director Conway about this, and, um, one of the things that I think I just wanted to put out there relative to this before it makes its way back to us again, is that we, there was, there is a premium that is, that had been discussed, um, that Linfield would be paying, uh, for this. I actually think that, um, we can go a bit higher with the premium. I know there have been some discussions back and forth, so I would like to introduce that into the dialogue as we kind of move forward in, in, in the weeks and months to come, because, um, Linfield needs this more than we need Linfield to have this. Um, I'm looking at your home, talking about your hometown. I apologize, Madam Chair. But, um, so I, I think there is an opportunity here perhaps to, to, um, better advantage Wakefield, um, relative to the, the, we have more leverage, I guess is what I'm trying to say. And I, and I think we should try to utilize that. So I've spoken with, with, um, Director Conway about it. Um, so I just think that should be part of our, our dialoguing as we, as we move forward before we, we sign off on that. And I, I wanted to kind of put it out there now.
Yep.
So if there's discussion to be had with Linfield, we, those discussions can be had sooner rather than later.
Yeah, just in general, if I may, uh, I had also just wondered, because I don't really know the details of the project, how much is it gonna tie up of our people? I saw that Linfield would be burying the costs, but if that's the cost of the line or the cost of, you know, the hard assets, you know, are, are people who I would also like to have fixing our roads and sidewalks going to be also, you know, compensated? Are we gonna be compensated for their time, et cetera? Those are some thought, you know, considerations.
I can speak to that a little bit. So, uh, the only thing that we have invested on a time basis is, um, some of my time, um, attended meetings and having conversations in the town engineer's time. Um, should this move forward and get constructed, um, we certainly recognize we are very, very busy. Our priorities are here. So it would involve our water consultant basically being our eyes and ears and being funded as part of this. So we'll be focused on our mission, um, for all the capital work that we have here. Um, but our partners on the, on the water end, uh, a company called Environmental Partners, uh, will be acting on our behalf, uh, for that project. So we don't anticipate any time lost, um, for anything like that, and very, very minimal involvement other than maybe a conversation or some volunteer.
If the consultants are there for project management, I would just say that why wouldn't they also, you know, I'm just curious, would they be paid by us or would they be paid by Linfield?
Linfield.
Okay.
That, that would be part of it. Um, so everything from design to construction management, um, the whole, the whole kit.
Okay.
So I do think maybe as we, in, before we sign the agreement, uh, a refresher presentation.
Absolutely.
I don't remember twenty twenty-one, and I think to Counselor Dombrowski's point, um, in two years, your time has become more valuable. So as we do a budget, let's, let's up the numbers a little bit. Uh, fair, um, but, you know, just realistically of your time and, and the engineering department's time. Because, yes, I, I, I love the fact that it'll help us get under one-twenty-eight and that that is something that, you know, is, has been on your mind. So it's, it's, it is helping us too, but I think let's do an accurate budget of what we'll be doing.
Sure.
Great.
Madam Chair, uh, move to, uh, authorize, uh, the Chair of the Town Council to sign the, uh, determination and consent as presented. Second.
Uh, any further discussion? All in favor, six, zero unanimous. Thank you very much.
Yeah, Madam Chair, that is the original sign by Linfield. If you could countersign it and give it back to me, I'll make sure that both towns have a copy.
Look at real time. That is amazing.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Joe.
Thank you, everyone. I appreciate it.
Um, going back up to the budget, let's, uh, we are gonna relook at budget number one, Town Council again.
Yes, um, I'll start off and, um, Kevin can jump in if he needs, or he doesn't need to at all. Uh, we did look at this before and
We did look at this before, and a few changes. The budget in front of you is a decrease of $15,272 over the prior fiscal year budget. The, the decrease breaks down $20,032, excuse me, $20,032, the tax levy, and an increase of $4,760 in water and sewer transfers. Based on the conversations that we had with the council last time, this budget does phase out the, the greeters at Town Hall, and it does not include any other employees or full-time employees or part-time employees, as we talked about. On the expense side, we did increase the Human Rights Commission budget by $2,000 based on the events that they're doing, and they just need the money to carry them on. We also increased the sundry charges $1,000 due to the increased costs. For the M-M-M-A dues, I tell you, advertising for town meeting and warrants is one of the major expenses in here, and that's, it is what it is. If the warrant's a little bit longer, it costs a little bit more. Professional services, our VHB, our traffic engineer consultant for our Traffic Advisory Committee, that's $20,000 of the 26th. And I think we went through the rest of the budget last time, so we open up for any questions or comments at this point. Did you want to add anything?
No, I have it.
Oh, I had one more thing on that. If you look at this budget as it's presented, along with all of the budgets, including the DPW budget that was just approved, at this point, with basically the vast majority, if not all, of the operational budgets in, I'm very proud of the fact that on the tax levy side, we have an increase 2.67% over last fiscal year, which is very good. It's, it's, it's a very good job. I'll give you a little sneak peek on the next big budget coming in is health insurance, and GIC did set their rates, and we're crunching numbers there, but I'm pretty confident that that is going to be in the, under 3% on the tax levy side as well. So, that continues to pay dividends and a lot of sleepless nights waiting for that to come in because that's a big issue, and, you know, staff has been great. We have a great public employee committee, which is made up of all the unions, and we've really worked through this problem, the health insurance cost, I should say, over the last 10, 15 years, and it's, it's, it's worked really well for us. So, that being said, we can dive into this budget right here.
Counsel Chimes?
I guess I'll make a motion to accept the Town Council budget for fiscal 2024 as presented by Mr. Mayo.
Do you have a second? We need a second to then debate and discuss.
Yeah.
Second.
So, thank you, Counsel Jabrowski. Okay, and now discussion. Counsel Dennehy.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayo, for putting together the, so quickly, looking at kind of the, the gap analysis at Town Hall. I was wondering if you can, can review or share with what you shared with your findings.
Sure. Well, as the Town Council requested on February 13th, the discussion of adding a position, and I'm going to call it in the Director's Strategic Growth and Development, which is hard to say, but that's what Counsel Dennehy had called. And I was asked to do a few things, and I was asked to look at, you know, where there are areas that we, because of our staff, cannot completely cover just because of time. We do run very lean. I've said that. I'm very proud of the fact that we run very lean. I think that a lot of other communities have probably administrative functions of, you know, three, four more people than we have. And that's, that's fine. We've always been that, that way, and my people know that I demand a lot of myself, and I demand a lot of them, and I demand a lot of time. So, we try to hit everything we can. Are there things that we need to look a little better on? Absolutely. I think that the Planning Board could use a little bit more management on that, and we talked about that. I think we do, we need to do a little bit of a better job on facilitating communications among the boards, particularly these big projects. I think we've done a really good job. We could just enhance that a little bit. The housing issue right now with Chapter 48 has taken a lot of our time up. I think we would keep that, continue doing that, but it did take away from other, other, other areas there. And I think that we could do, and it's taking us away from focusing more on business development and what have you. And I think that we could work, assist our Communications Director a little bit more, you know, because I think I'm, I'm her backup, and I'm not all that good at finding things when she's not there. But, I, I think our staff does a great job. They work very hard. We work very lean. My biggest concern is that this is a very tough financial year. I'm really concerned with the budgeting going forward. So, in my, my feeling, this is not the time. I'd like to, you know, continue to manage this and, and go that way. Although I do believe that, I, I do see, you know, that we could certainly do more, we can always do more, and my staff is, is up to work, work a little bit harder. We talked about that. They were very involved in this drafting as well. So, that's where we are, or where my recommendation is, I should say.
I appreciate that. Can I ask questions now?
Of course, yep.
Okay. So, some things, Kevin, I do appreciate that, and I understand that, you know, I understand running lean, and I appreciate it. I think that our town is really well-run, and I think we're recognized for that. But at the same time, I think that this is not a big ask. I don't think that it, I mean, it's adding a new person, but I think that the cost-benefit analysis is that I don't think that there's, for me, it's very clear. And I kind of think back to when I had my business, and it's always that decision of, and when I've, when I started a department at another company, was adding a new position. And it was always very scary because it was like, is that position going to be worth what we're investing in? And you never want to add a position and then only to take it back because that's not fair to the employee either. So, but then I think about opportunities lost when you don't make that leap of faith and add the position. And I'm concerned about is that when I look at the job descriptions, there's nobody's job description that specifically addresses housing. And I think that we've had, over the last several years, we've had a lot of growth. We've heard from, or I've heard from the Planning, the Planning Board about that they would really appreciate having the assistance, and they, they think that a lot of the initiatives that we're working on really can't be fully achieved until we have somebody, a full-time employee at Town Hall, kind of driving the bus and looking at, looking at our growth strategically so that we can have planned. And right now, it's really being, it's, we don't have anybody who's leading that effort, and that's a concern to me. Yeah, I was talking to somebody in another community, a leader who's in another community, and question I was asked was, well, who does, who directs, who does ZBA, who supports ZBA? And I said, I don't know who supports ZBA. So, that was a, that's a concern. I know that with the school, the last school committee meeting, Doug Lyons was talking about, about having a strategic plan to address, you know, universal pre-K that's being discussed at the state level, and it's been discussed for a very long time, but it's most likely moving forward. And what that means in terms of space planning, what that means in terms of space planning for us, that there's, you know, we have like under 50 preschool students, and we have a significant waitlist. And then if universal preschool comes through, that's going to be having to find additional space for, for those students that we need to accompany. 40A is about, you know, family housing, so we have that to address. So, I think our needs are quite, quite great. I think we're also missing out on grant opportunities is, you know, and I think that this position could, could, could help support itself through grants that could be generated. It's, especially with the sustainability component that I think is really essential to this position. We can use $18,000 from the Green Community Program that we're, that we have. You know, we, the, you know, Melrose has a, Melrose that has a large, robust planning department, that has a planner, an assistant planner, a sustainability person, economic and community development. They were able to get a grant of $75,000 to review zoning, to review their zoning laws. We're taking $50,000 out of the tax levy, so that's a significant savings. They were also able to get $168,000 grant for ADA compliance and accessibility work. So, I think that there's a lot of opportunities where this position could actually save us, save us money. You know, we've created more housing than any other community. Our housing, our housing and our development is being done very quickly, and we've heard from fire, and we heard from police, and we have heard from schools, that that is affecting our infrastructure. I think that we need to have somebody who is being able to monitor, monitor that growth and, and being able to coordinate with fire, with police, with schools, looking at maybe doing a town-wide traffic study, and probably most importantly, making sure that the work that we have done and, and that's had the voice of our community in the planning and the development of what we want, you know, for our community as we see it growing, what are those priorities, that we have somebody who is constantly monitoring that and making sure that it's, it's, that it's not being left behind. And so, for those reasons, I am not ready to let go of it in this budget cycle because I think it's a really important position, and I think it's very tempting to say, you know what, this year is not, this year is not the year to do it, but, you know, is there ever a good time to spend money? I don't think that we ever have, you know, we, I think we always have to look carefully at our priorities and what we want as a community, and I think this is a priority. And I think it's a priority for now. There's always a reason not to spend money, but I think that this is money well-spent. So, that is, I, I'd love to hear from my colleagues about what they think. I respect everybody, and would love to hear input into that and feedback.
Can I just hit on a couple of things?
Yeah.
The ZBA is managed. They have an administrative person that manages all the ZBA stuff. It's, it's in the budget every year, so, so that's, that's been done. 40A, we've done a lot of work on 40A, and I think that, I think we're going to continue to do that, you know, in-house. We've had a lot of presentations here, and in fact, other communities have called me and asked for our presentations because they're much better than they have. So, I'm pretty proud of the work that, that we've done there. And I think we do have a lot of meetings that brings in schools and, and, and police and fire when we talk about big projects. I agree, we're lean. I do agree with that, but a lot of these things are being, are being done. I kind of get a kick out of when I hear about other communities that have huge planning departments, and they put a lot of people in there that really aren't planners. So, I think we have to be a little careful when a community says, oh, well, you have four or five people in the planning department. When I drill down, one person is kind of an IT part-time person that does some stuff. So, it is interesting. But I think that our people are, are working very hard, doing really well. I think we are hitting most of these things, and we have had a lot of growth, and that was because of what we did in planning. They're all taking advantage of the bylaw that we passed in 2015 that opened up that whole, whole thing. And we all look at grants, including my town engineer looks at grants too, so we're all looking at those. But are we spread thin? Yes. But I do think that we are hitting those things the best, the best that we can.
No, and, and I, I do want to recognize that I know that everybody is working very hard, and this is, this is a recognition of how hard everybody is working and a recognition of, you know, that, that a centralized person who would be kind of driving the bus would, I think, would be really, is really needed in terms of.
Well, I think they'd be given directions.
Yeah.
They wouldn't be deciding where to go. They'd be giving directions.
And I, you know, you know, that, that I know that the Planning Board would be, would be appreciative of it, and I know that, you know, kind of looking at this from a community-wide, and, and I see it as a way of us being more proactive, so. Counsel Jabrowski?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you, Steve, and Counsel Dennehy, for your comments on that. I think I maybe see this like a little bit differently, and I'm looking at how, what, what positions we're resourcing now and what we're getting from those. And I, I look specifically at the community, community and economic development position, and that was really with a very specific purpose. And that, you know, we, if you look at the job description, it talks about all the ways in which that role was to really generate additional tax revenue ultimately by bringing in new, new business into our town. And I think the current arrangement that we have has really stunted economic development within our community because I think the, the Economic Development Director is doing a lot of work in areas that aren't a part of her job description, and in so doing, is spread thin, to use this, you know, this, this idea, spread thin to be able to do the work that she was primarily charged with doing. And so, I'm not faulting her in any way, but I think she's had a lot of things piled on to her to do that are not really, you know, in, in, in the realm of economic development. And I think that there are costs to that. One, I think we're not deploying those tax dollars as best we can because we're funding a, a position currently that is not showing the deliverables from an economic development standpoint because she, she's kind of had, has this kind of like hybrid, kind of split role. And I think that's a problem because I don't think that we're getting, you know, the kind of return on, on that roles investment, and it's, and it's not at all to say with what Aaron, I mean, Aaron, I think is great, but I think it's, it's, she's being set up to not be able to realize the full potential of what we had expected with that. And I, I agree with, with Mr. Mayo, just because other communities are doing something, I don't think that that's the model. I, I think it's always best to look at best practices of those communities. And so, I've, I've, I've done a little bit of due diligence and others to kind of see, you know, what's worked, what's not. One of the, the, the themes that's really come out of what I've kind of been exploring is that, yeah, these are really like kind of different functions. There, there is definitely overlap and collaboration between economic development and, I'll say, strategic planning, but there's also like nuances to both that are, are independent and separate from one another. The last thing I want to do is add FTE. I just don't want to do it, and I'll be very clear on that, and I think I have a pretty long history of that. But I also don't want to spend money in ways that I think we're not realizing the best benefit of, of tax dollars. And, and I think right now, we're, we're without a quarterback in, in ways that are consequential. One, because I think we're losing out on the, the additional revenue we could get from having more businesses come to town. We haven't brought new industry businesses to town in the last few years. I, COVID plays a role in that certainly, but other communities are. And so, that, that concerns me. I would like to see our Economic Development Director be able to refocus her energies on economic development. I think that we're really missing out there. And as best I can tell from all that I've seen, there are a lot of grant opportunities here to be able to better support this position, and if, if, if this strategic position were to be put into place. And we're without a quarterback right now, and there's, we're so disjointed. I agree with what Steve says, that we come together with our multiple departments and looking at a project, but it's on a project-by-project basis more than it is a strategic basis. So, in any one project we're looking at, all right, how can we improve this particular project, and what can we get from this, this developer? Which is good, but I think we need to look at it in the aggregate. I think we're right now way too siloed in the way that we're approaching these projects, and there's, there's a consequence to that. I want to be able to see it better streamlined, and I don't expect that of Mr. Mayo. I don't think that, Steve, I don't think that you have the, if you have the bandwidth, you shouldn't, you, you shouldn't be doing that. You know, I think that that's, that it's, it's too big of an ask, and, and I think it ultimately is going to. You know, I think that that's, that it's, it's too big of an ask and, and I think it ultimately is going to take you away from other things. I don't think that it's the appropriate role of the Economic, Community Economic Development Director. And I think the town engineer has so many other things going on. There's a lot, I know from, you know, communicating with him, he's, he's able to take on a lot of water, but he's doing a whole heck of a lot. So the idea that, that he's in a position to take this on, and so then, then the question is, well, who is there? So I think in order to, to, to realize the best benefit from the tax dollars that we are deploying to this first position, we need to be able to make sure that, that we have an opportunity to try to better, in the aggregate, strategically move, move the town forward. And I don't, I don't think we can do that without, without some type of position. And I've thought through any number of ways that we can make that happen and, and, and I, I don't know that there, there's not a panacea here. There's, I don't think there's like one, one clear answer. But to me, I, I think we're to the point now where what's happening in development now and happening in the next five years will have generational impacts on our town in any number of ways. I think we need to have an impact fund that was brought up when, um, the acting, uh, fire chief was here. I want to explore that further. I think there has to be that kind of analysis done. I, I want to see real numbers of ultimately what is the impact of, of development? And how can we make sure that we're keeping pace with, with what the infrastructure demands will be? And I don't think that we, we have the means by which we can do that under our current situation. And, and so because things aren't, aren't working as, as they should from my perspective with the current role, I think we need to, to figure out how we solve for that. And I think grant writing would have to be an essential part of this role. And if there is to be someone in place, they have to be able to, um, bring in the kinds of dollars that, that would justify, you know, their being in place. Because it's, it's not an insignificant ask, especially in this, this current economic climate that we're dealing with, with our town. And I, and I recognize that. But, uh, but I, I, I do agree with, with Counselor Dennehy that I think that we, we have a missing component here that we, we have to address. And I'm really concerned about economic development not, not working as it should currently.
Counselor McLean.
Didn't even have my hand up.
I saw you looking at your notes.
I do have notes, yes. A few things. I think we've had discussions in the past about, you know, tax policy. We've had discussions about how we might, we have differences of opinion as to whether we might ultimately be able to tax less than two and a half plus new growth. But I think, Steve, you were, you were kind of optimistic more than I was on, on that prospect. But that would indicate to me that we're going to have some reserves. And you know, I asked recently for an update on revenue. I think it's hard to have these discussions in a vacuum. And I think we are to some extent in a vacuum if we're not talking about, well, our permit's really up because of Tarrant Lane and other projects. Are we taking in another five hundred thousand more than we thought we had projected? You know, not that I'm just trying to find money for this position, but in a town budget that's somewhere in the neighborhood of, you know, eighty to a hundred million dollars, depending on which number you want to use, um, might there be funding for such a position? When you look at the TOM, the, uh, the Housing Production Plan and the forty-page, uh, you know, guideline that goes with it, there's a lot in there. And this is our housing production plan going back to fifteen and we've quoted it to the Commonwealth, you know, sent it to the Commonwealth a couple of times recently. Let me just pull out a couple of nuggets. On page sixty-seven, expand the town planner's office to bring in additional professional and administrative support. Maybe we could expand it to the number of one and at least have a planner. The, there are all kinds, and this is to somewhat to Counselor Dombrowski's point. There are all kinds of entities mentioned in here, path, I don't know what path is, but places one might go and pursue money, be it for a project or, or, you know, whether you want to call it a grant or something that's going into a project. There's so much to be pursued and someone has to be pursuing it. The, on page eighty-four of our Housing Production Plan, you know, it's key to monitor and enforce the affordability requirements. That's a critical aspect. You know, I had asked, do we have a list? We don't have a list. I mean, we, we know what our SHI inventory is, right? But it seems to me that over the course of the years, that is the kind of thing that a planner in the last four or five years might have been very interested in, interested in doing. So there are things outside of the, the good ten or fifteen, Steve, that you identify as being gaps where, you know, I think it's a red herring. We're not, no one here is saying that our people aren't working hard. No one is saying that. We're, we're saying that, um, from the perspective of letting the Economic Development Coordinator, you know, focus on that and letting a planner, you know, I, I am a personal, I have the personal belief that a lot of our growth has begotten more growth. And we hear it from the police and we hear it from the fire and it's also a cost growth. I haven't seen tax relief as a result of these new buildings. I've seen traffic increase. So to me, you know, it's not, it's smart growth. It's not just growth for growth's sake. And I would like to see a person who is, you know, the quarterback, if you will, you use the football analogy, or somebody as a point person to be interacting with all the groups, with ZBA, with planning board. And, and I think it is done now, as, he didn't use the term, but I think as Counselor Dombrowski was saying, we're really working more on an ad hoc basis right now. And I think we really could use this position. I think it could be funded. I'd be willing to fund it for a year or two. If we have a bad year this year or a year that makes somebody particularly nervous, fund it for a year or two, a lot of ARPA funds. Would be a suggestion I would have if we're that worried about revenue and expenses. Those are just a few items that I wanted to mention. We have identified a lot of gaps and I think there are more to be identified. You know, when you go through these documents, there's, there's so much that a planner could be doing. And we just don't have anybody doing those, that one position right now. So that's, that's where I stand on it.
Counselor Vincent?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Although I've only been in office less than a year, because I am retired, I do spend a considerable amount of time down at Town Hall. And I will say in all candor, going back to my military career, I, I think that he's not my commanding officer. But Steve Mayo was one of the finest commanding officers that I've seen when I compare him to my military brethren. But when I look at how lean the staff is, when I consider he doesn't have an assistant town planner, I mean, assistant town administrator, coupled with the fact that there's nobody in this planning or strategic growth position, I do get concerned that there are missed opportunities. I'll share with you for a moment that if you look at how many communities in Massachusetts that have the three hundred and fifty-one either have an Affordable Housing Trust Fund and/or are Community Preservation Act communities, it's two hundred and thirty-one out of the three hundred and fifty-one municipalities, that's two-third. There's also another eighty-five municipalities, and I don't know the cross-reference on them, that are Housing Choice designated communities. Where I look at missed opportunities, I look at the fact that Andover, Melrose, Redding and Stonem have Affordable Housing Trust Funds and are Housing Choice designated communities and have been, um, Housing Choice designated communities going back to two thousand and eighteen. We just applied for the first time in March of this year. Now arguably, we may not have been eligible in years past by hitting the five percent and five hundred, um, new unit threshold over, over a five-year period of time. But we clearly had met the lower standard of three years or three hundred units, which then allowed us to look at back then, now it's fifteen, but back then it was nine, um, categories to see if you comply with those. And arguably, we did comply with those in years past. So what, I'm not saying we would have been selected as a Housing Choice designated community in twenty twenty-two, twenty-one, twenty, but there wasn't anybody to quarterback it, to assess it and then bring it to the town council. Because I've looked at the records to see if these were ever, uh, talked about at town council and they weren't. The same thing with the Affordable Housing Trust Fund that Counselor McLean, um, recently was talking about. That is an issue that over many years, if you had a planner, that person could have come in and said, here is the recommendation that's in the Housing Production Plan, which even though it's expired and we're not allowed to expand it once it expires, it's expired, but we can still use the verbiage that's in there. You would have had somebody that could come in, which frankly, right now, town council members are putting together the presentation that's going to come out tonight about the Housing, Affordable Housing Trust Fund. That isn't our responsibility. We are filling those gaps in this particular endeavor right now. But that's something that in my opinion, if you had a quarterback as part of town staff to augment with Steve, who I'm very impressed with, and the staff, especially Erin, I'm very impressed with what she does, but I totally echo what Counselor Dombrowski said, which is that if you look at her job description, the community and economic components not being worked on to the extent that it probably should be because she's had to assume a lot of these planning responsibilities, uh, housing-type responsibilities. So I, I look at the fact that there are gaps and the gaps should probably be filled now. To, to allude to one thing that Counselor Dennehy said, the reason, we do apply for grants, don't get me wrong. But the reason that we couldn't apply for the grant to get money to help with the zoning bylaws is because Melrose got that through the Housing Choice Designated Community. So they were able to, to get seventy-five thousand dollars to look at their zoning ordinances because they could apply for that grant. We weren't even eligible to apply for that grant because we weren't a Housing Choice Designated Community. We still don't know if we're going to be, we just submitted the application. So for, for those reasons and echoing what my colleagues have already said, I, I don't know that we can afford to wait on something like this because I think in looking at the cost-benefit analysis, having somebody in that position helping us apply for grants and, and bringing frankly, things to our attention that should be brought to our attention so that we can act on them benefits the town more than waiting and doing this at a later date. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Counselor Chines?
Thank you and appreciate the, the discussion on this. And, you know, I, I want to start by saying I, I do, in, you know, in kind of working through this with Counselor Dennehy and, and, um, you know, working through Mr. Mayo, your analysis, I, I do think that there is a need that is unmet. And, you know, like everyone else, I mean, that is not a need that is unmet because of a lack of effort on the part of, of folks in Town Hall. I, I think I'm actually continually impressed by the effort, Mr. Mayo, of you and, and your team. So I do think that there is a, a need for resources in Town Hall for some of these issues. For me though, my concern is that we are looking at a budget cycle that is rife with uncertainty right now. We have three very, very significant labor contracts that are out for negotiation right now, one of which represents about forty percent of, of the town budget. State aid in the governor's proposal and restricted general government aid is coming in at an increase of two percent, which I, through my, my friends and colleagues at Mass Municipal Association, we are lobbying very, very hard to come in at a higher number, but the, you know, that's an increase that's a little bit disappointing. You know, we still don't know where the economic climate is going from an inflation standpoint. Other economic factors have felt very uncertain, certainly especially in the last few days with, you know, the, the bank failures that are now in the news, which is kind of frighteningly reminiscent of, of two thousand and eight. And so with all of that, I, I think for me, I am inclined to wait on adding a position until we have some more clarity around some of these other issues. And again, that, that's not a, a decision I come to lightly because I do think that there is a need there. You know, I, I just worry about trying to kind of nail some things down that, you know, are, are pretty big uncertainties for us in this budget. And so, you know, from my perspective, I, I'd say on, on adding a new position, I'm not a no, but I'm kind of a not yet because of those issues and would just ask us to kind of consider the environment we're operating in as we think about where we're going forward. Again, fully agree that there is a long-term need. I'm just not quite there yet in terms of the other factors that we're trying to balance in this budget cycle.
Steve, did you want to respond to anything?
Uh, no, but I, I would suggest that if the council is going to add to the budget, I think I'd prefer it to be ARPA. Kevin, agree? Yeah, if that's the case, I think, we've done that before, we phased things in before. I think I would prefer that this year or next fiscal year. But, um, you know, and again, um, I just want to reiterate, you know, we, um, hey, we can always, we can always do better. We say that, that all the time, try to be better, you know, tomorrow than we were today and better the next day. I think we do hit a lot of these things. I like running lean and, and mean and maybe that's, I, I say it's a sense of pride and it's also a curse. I get it and I've said that to all of you. But if we are going to go forward on this, I would suggest that we use ARPA, at least for this fiscal year. And we have another year to, uh, December of two thousand and twenty-four to, um, appropriate everything anyway and we can spend the two years after that, so we could run that for a year or two. On the revenue side, I, I did send you back a email today, I don't know if you got it.
Yes, I did, yeah.
I am.
I don't think we have the specifics yet though, right?
Right, yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm saying that I, I think that we should wait until, on the revenue side, until the end of, um, March, all of the, um, excise taxes will be in, we'll have a much better feeling and it's like quarter, right? It's the third quarter of the year.
Right.
So a little better. Revenues did go higher than I thought, which, which is why I'm a little bit more positive than, um, uh, finance, some members of the Finance Committee is. However, I do agree with Counselor Chines, we have three made, three big major contracts, only two of which I really have any, I'm not going to say say, any, any hand in really. And, uh, you know, the Finance Committee, you know, did announce that, uh, they felt that the school budget ask was going to be north of five percent. And that's, that puts a little bit of a strain on what I had projected back in October at our Tribewood meeting. So that's, throughout all of those things are swirling around.
Counselor Chines?
Just one other comment and this is just maybe some historic clarity. And I think Counselor Dombrowski, you raised the point well that, you know, sort of we, the way that the economic development position has kind of emerged has been very different than what we expected. I think though, when we created that position, we didn't know, obviously it wasn't in existence. We didn't know about chapter forty A and so I think that's been a bit of a, a wild card in all of this. Again, I think that that's.
It also was hired during COVID.
Yeah, there's that whole thing too. Nothing was normal, nothing's been normal in the last two years. I think that speaks to, again, the need for something, but also I, I think it speaks to sort of some understandability that obviously we've had to kind of redeploy resources because just the reality of what we faced has been, you know, whether it's COVID or, or chapter forty A, different than I think, you know, we expected when, when we created that position in two thousand and nineteen.
And even during that, we did bring in our first TIF, so that was a big, that was a big issue, big.
Counselor Dombrowski?
I really appreciate what you're saying, Mr. Mayo, about the budgeting and I think you've done an excellent job of being incredibly lean. And I, I hear and agree with your point, Counselor Chines, that the, especially the, the contract on the school department side will have significant impacts on, on the budget. But I think we also have to be mindful of the fact that we can only be so lean on, on what I'll call the town side of things. And it really behooves the school department to be equally mindful of the realities as they present, you know, financially. And I'm not, uh, this is not a commentary at all on a teacher's contract, but just in general, when they're looking at their own budgeting. Because I, I know like on the town side, I have been laboring over this decision as Counselor Dennehy can, can attest to. I've been laboring over it because I don't like adding FTE. And I think that it's so incredibly important that, on the school department side, that, that be equally recognized. Because what we're talking about here in, in the grand scheme of this budget is a very small percentage of the overall budget. And that's not to minimize this because it's, it's a spend, it's an out-of-pocket spend here, I get that. But, uh, you know, it, I kind of feel like we're, we're, we have two different, you know, like, we have two different types of budgets going on here. We have the town budget where we're scrutinizing everything. And I think the school department budget with, that I, I presume will be mindful of the fact that teachers are going to be negotiating what they believe to be a fair contract and, and they will insist upon that, as they should. And that might mean that school department has to look at ways in which within their own budget, they can make things work. Because Mr. Mayo makes things work every single day with, within what we have. And so, you know, I, while I, I appreciate your argument, Counselor Chines, in terms of the reality of, okay, we, we have uncertainty here, there also has to be an awareness of, there's a, there's a certain limit to, you know, to, to what, what this can, the spend can be relative to. And perhaps it's, it's not contracts, but it's perhaps other, other aspects of the school, school department that I'm not in a position to speak to. I don't, I don't study that budget yet. But I don't think that we can sacrifice what I think is, is a greater town-wide need out of, out of a concern of what may or may not be relative, relative to that, to that budget. Because that's something, I've always said, the most consequential discussions and the most consequential decision isn't even made around this table or at FinCom. It's made when there, when there's those contractual negotiations for teachers because it's such a, makes up such a large portion of the entire budget and, and that's where it is.
And just as the school department liaison, I, I want to say, I think Superintendent Lyons and the school committee is very, very aware of those trade-offs. I, I think, I, I just want to make sure that, you know, as a council, I mean, there is no conversation that I've ever. ever had with Superintendent Lyons around the budget where he isn't painfully aware of being as careful and prudent and deliberate as they can be. So I just want to put that out there. I mean, I think that there is the same level of discipline and effort to make sure that, you know, the school department is budgeting as prudently as possible as we do around this table. I mean, I feel very, very confident in that, you know, certainly, Mr. Mayo, I know you speak with Dr. Lyons probably.
Every day.
Excuse me, daily. I don't want the impression to be given from the conversation here that, you know, the school committee or Dr. Lyons are anything less than careful and prudent in what they're proposing, and they agonize over every single dollar that they put in front of the town for their budget.
I'm not sure that the non-teacher staffing levels support that, but I think when they come before us, it's a reasonable inquiry for us to have.
It's a reasonable inquiry. I think we will find that it is well-supported, and, you know, I mean, just speaking...
And I'm talking non-teacher, you know, I'm talking...
Oh, I agree. And I think one of the things we've got to be mindful of is that, you know, non-teachers are a huge part of the way we deliver education in Wakefield, particularly at a time when the social, emotional, behavioral needs of students are far, far more intense than they were a few years ago. You know, the paraprofessionals we hire, the non-teacher staff, are really an important part of the budget and the school's ability to be able to deliver education to the students that we serve, our ability to be able to keep students in district with special needs. And so, and that's a much larger discussion than we'll get into.
So I'm just going to, we're having a great conversation about the school budget, which will come back, come in front of us at a future meeting. So, so, great points.
April 10th.
April 10th, yeah, I knew it was an upcoming meeting. And Steve, you have heard how my fellow counselors in your daily conversations with Dr. Lyons about the questions we will be ready to ask them when they come in front of us. We have a motion in front of us on the town council budget.
Can I just...
Counselor Dennehy, yep.
I just want to make one comment, is that adding this position, we are still lean at Town Hall, in terms of our town budget is still very lean, and you can continue to be proud of that. And a lot has changed since 2019. There's been more changes, I think, than anybody anticipated. And I think that's one of the good things about our role is that we are not, we are recognizing the changes and we're being nimble and adaptable, so.
So do you have an amendment, or?
Let me come up with something. How about I would like to amend, I would like to amend the 2024 budget and add the sum of $100,000 to fund the position, I move to use $100,000, I move to use $100,000 of ARPA funds to fund the position of strategic growth and development to the 2024 budget. Is that right, Mr. Mullen?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, yes.
I need a second.
A second.
Okay, discussion. Counselor McLean.
Just a point of clarification. I believe that, in my opinion, this would be a union position.
No.
And I don't know if we have to say that or don't have to say it.
I would say it would be.
It would be, I would say non-union.
Non-union, okay. All right, so we'll go with, okay. I think we've had, I've had a lot of discussion, Madam Chair. I have nothing else other than to vote.
Counselor Dubrowski.
I would just seek to amend it to be up to 100,000, because there's no assumption here that it's going to be $100,000 pay, you know, salary. That's not what I'm voting on. I'm voting on, you know, whatever market justifies and whatever the qualifications of the person are. And, and so I guess I'll deal with that first.
So just as a point of order, so we have to, I mean, if we are amending it, we do have to have a specific number. But I think the understanding is, as a council, I mean, like any part of the budget, I mean, if you spend less, the money gets returned to the Treasury. So my assumption would be if this moves forward, you know, Mr. Mayo, you will, you know, hire someone on the basis of the budget, but that number may end up being different than whatever the amount is that we have.
I thought we could just authorize up to 100. Is that not correct, Mr. Mullen?
Well, but we're voting on the budget.
Madam Chair, a budget is an authorization. You don't necessarily have to spend all the money in the budget, but there's got to be a number in there for town meeting to vote on.
I think what you, what it sounds like you want to say is you want to increase the personal services section of the town council budget by $100,000 with the source of that funds being ARPA. Does that work for you, Kevin?
Yes.
And I guess that's my disconnect, because we're kind of voting on ARPA at the same time. So that's why I'm like, I want to be clear that we're not, we're not expending 100,000 of ARPA funds, up to 100,000. I guess, so it's maybe two different things. We're talking, maybe I'm getting into the weeds here, but we're talking about a budget with a number certain, but the ARPA money is up to 100,000.
I think we need an exact number for the budget. I mean, we might not spend it, like anything else. Like, you voted an exact number for sidewalk repair.
Right, no, I understand from a budget standpoint, you know. I just don't want to give the impression that this is a $100,000 position, because it's, it is not.
I understand what you're saying.
Well, I want to make sure everyone watching understands, though, too.
Is it, is it two separate votes, Tom? Is it a vote of the town council to spend our ARPA funds and then, and then to approve the budget with that funds? Is it two separate votes?
Well, I think you want to amend the budget to reflect the addition of this new position with a line item of $100,000 and to fund it for this year with ARPA funds.
And one vote?
One vote.
Okay.
Yeah.
Can I move to amend as described by Town Council Mullen?
Yes. Sherry, did you get that? The minutes will be correct.
Well said.
Okay, this is my first time doing a motion, so I apologize to everybody, but I would also like to add that it would be a full-time, a full-time senior-level position.
I guess I don't understand what senior level means. I think you're getting into a little bit.
So, yeah, point of order on that one as well. So I think, again, the motion, the original motion and the amendment that was proposed is specific to the budget. So I think to the extent that there are sort of descriptions or conditions on the position itself, I don't think that's in order for what we're talking about now. We're talking about an appropriation of money. So I think, Mr. Mayo, beyond sort of saying, you know, the motion is to add $100,000 to personal services to be funded out of ARPA for fiscal 2024, I think everything else would be a secondary discussion, if I'm thinking about that correctly, Mr. Mullen.
Well, I don't know. I mean, I don't see why you can't have a single motion that adds to the budget and describes the position that's being added. And the position that's being added is full-time, and whether you want to call it senior, or management, or non-union, whatever, the idea is, we're creating a kind of high mucky-muck. This is not somebody who's sitting at a counter and has to take all comers.
So I would move to...
You want to use the term high mucky-muck?
Yes.
I would move that we vote as, as, on a motion as described by Town Council Mullen. Is that correct?
Should I just read the motion, amend the motion a little bit that you had helped?
How about if, if the motion were to read, "To amend the town council budget to add the sum of $100,000 for the creation of a new town planner..."
Director of Strategic Growth and Development.
Director of Strategic, right. "As a full-time, non-union, management-level position to be funded in the first year with ARPA funds."
That's fine by me.
So moved by Ann. And thank you, Ann. And seconded by Counselor McLean. Okay, so I won't have anyone read that again. Do we have discussion on the amended motion? All in favor, say aye. One, two, three, four, five. All opposed, say no. Five to when the motion, the amended motion carries.
So, Madam Chair, so we've amended the original motion, so I believe we need to move to approve the budget as amended?
No, you don't, because it's higher.
Right.
Okay, gotcha. Okay.
That's what I thought. I thought that...
Got it. Okay.
Could you just repeat that motion?
Do you want to, should we, because it was, it was on the entire budget.
Yeah, so I guess then, if I could speak, so I, I still, I mean, I am not there on, on sort of the addition of the 100,000 at this point. But, you know, given that we are voting on the town council budget as a whole, I would change my vote to a yes, because I obviously I do support our budget.
Support the town council, yes, that's, yeah, because when we amended it, that, so 6-0, Sherry, for the amended.
Thank you for the clarification.
Yeah, that's, it took a minute there.
Yep.
Okay, thank you, Kevin. We kept delaying today, but thank you for coming. Budget item seven, traffic advisory recommendations. Is Lieutenant Anderson on?
Yes, he is. He's coming right over.
Hi, Joe, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Perfect.
Hi, Lieutenant Anderson, we are, have two votes today. Let's start with the handicap parking space on Chestnut Street.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Lieutenant Joe Anderson, from the Wakefield Police Department, Traffic Advisory Chair, I have two recommendations for you tonight from Traffic Advisory. The first is for a handicap parking space in the area of 26 Chestnut Street. That comes to us from a resident request, Traffic Advisory. We referred that to the Wakefield Commission on Disabilities who reviewed it. They were in favor of a handicap parking space, and Traffic Advisory also was as well. There's a resident there in a condo development, I believe it was built in the 1980s. It does provide off-street parking, which we typically look for in newer developments to include things like handicap spaces, EV spaces and things like that. However, the off-street parking that the development does provide is in the rear of the development, and there's somebody with a handicap placard that needs easier access to the front of the building. So we would respectfully request that you approve a handicap parking space in front of them at 26 Chestnut Street.
Great. Any discussion or questions? Counselor Dubrowski?
Can I just ask, Lieutenant Anderson, do we have any way of just making sure that we're tuned in, because this is such a specific request for a specific, you know, resident, that if they say were to move, you know, how do we know, you know, that, that that space may not be, you know, needed?
Yeah, so we, that's a good, very good point, and I'm not sure that we would get that, that notification from them. However, we, we did look at the surrounding area and the, kind of, it's on the, as you know, the square end of Chestnut Street. There's no handicap parking spaces on either end there, so we thought it was, it was well-placed both for that individual resident and just the fact that there are no accessible handicap spaces on Chestnut Street. And this is kind of, it's a unique request that we bring before you, because typically, we want to ensure that there's off-street handicap accessible parking, and we usually refer them back to the development. But it's kind of a unique circumstance where it's an older development and they need direct access to the front. We do caution, though, with these requests, that anybody can park in a handicap parking space with the proper placard or plate, so it really isn't just for that one resident. However, I think, you know, more often than not, they would have access to that space and wouldn't have to make the trip from the rear of the building. So that's why it's a little bit unique. But when we do approve these or even consider these requests, we do make sure that they are aware that it's not, even though they may have, you know, quite a bit of access to that space, it's not just for them that anybody could park there that's visiting somebody in the area or lives there.
Super helpful, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, do you have a motion?
Move to accept the Traffic Advisory Commission recommendation to add a parking, handicap parking space, excuse me, at 26 Chestnut Street.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Sorry, Julie's not here.
Julie's not here, so Ann, you have to play Julie's role today. Thank you, Ed.
Sorry.
Any discussion, further discussion? All in favor? Great, unanimous, thank you. And moving on to Foundry Street.
This request is in the area of 69 Foundry Street. There is a new multifamily development there, and we did review this development when it came before Traffic Advisory some time ago. It's now occupied. I think one of the recommendations that didn't make it back to Traffic Advisory, when it went through the permitting process with the ZBA, was a recommendation from the ZBA to have no parking here to corner signs on either side of the curb cuts for the two-access driveways that support the off-street parking for 69 Foundry Street. So the restriction never came back to us. The developer did comply with the Zoning Board of Appeals' request to have that signage there. However, it, as you can see in the photos that submitted with your meeting materials, it's within a few feet of the curb cuts, which doesn't allow for adequate sightline visibility when vehicles are exiting onto Foundry Street from the off-street parking there. So we would just request that on both sides of the curb cuts to both access driveways, it would be posted, no parking here to corner, 10 feet from the curb cuts to allow for adequate sightline visibility when exiting. And like I said, that's something that we would typically, would have typically approved through Traffic Advisory. It's something that the Zoning Board of Appeals recommended, and it just didn't come back to us, and that's why we're here now, after it's already been developed. So they've been running into a little bit of an issue of visibility there now, and we'd like to rectify that.
Great. Any discussion? Do you have a motion?
Move to accept the Traffic Advisory Committee recommendation with regard to no parking restrictions on, at 69 Foundry Street.
Second.
Did you get that, Sherry?
Not quite sure who did the second.
I think it was a three-way tie. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye. 6-0. Thank you so much. Thank you, Lieutenant Anderson.
Thank you very much, everybody. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Moving on, item number eight, Affordable Housing Trust.
Just like at home, I'm going to work the clicker. Please, I don't want anybody getting at home either, so.
You go, Steve.
All right. Bob and Counselor, Counselor Vincent and Counselor McLean have done a lot of work on this very important tool in our toolbox, I think, to help, help with affordable housing in the town of Wakefield. And we have a very brief PowerPoint here, but I think the end game is that we would like, and please jump in, gentlemen, because you spent a lot of time on this, we would like to have the town adopt the bylaw regarding a Affordable Housing Trust, and adopt a, adopt the Mass General Law and adopt a bylaw in order for us to take advantage of this. So we'll go through this, and I think that, gentlemen, I'll click and you jump in, Mike and Bob, and keep going. There we go. So we talked about this before. Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 55(c), which was enacted in 2005, does give the ability for municipalities to enter into this Affordable Housing Trust. And I think, it's up to 136 now?
Well, it's 136 to have the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. And as I alluded to a few minutes ago, a lot of communities don't have a trust fund because they have a CPA community. But when you combine how many are CPA communities, how many have Affordable Housing Trust Funds, or somebody have both, that constitutes almost two-thirds of the municipalities in Massachusetts.
So this was one of the primary recommendations of the Housing Production Plan back in 2015, and was on pages 63 to 91. I don't know if everyone has them, has the plan. I think you were given it before. It's...
160-some pages.
Yeah.
The thing I'll note on here real quickly, I had updated the slides, but then I ran... The thing I'll note on here real quickly, I had updated the slides, but then I erroneously didn't get them into you, so I apologize for that, the first recommended strategy in the Housing Production Plan was to establish an Affordable Housing Trust Fund, then, and that's on pages 64 to 66 of that document, thereon after, where you see capacity building, zoning strategies and housing production strategies, what you're going to see in these subsequent pages, the Affordable Housing Trust Fund is one of the responsible parties for every single one of these strategies that you're going to see on the remainder of the slides, so the goal was to create a Housing Trust Fund, and then the production plan delineated what responsibilities the trust fund would have, most often with the Town Council, Planning Board, or the ZBA.
I'd also add, Steve, that on page 65, that is where it stated that Wakefield had segregated about $760,000 in support of affordable housing, but the town has, had at that time, no municipal entity to oversee the spending, so it's really, you know, paramount that we have some mechanism to use the funding that has existed for some time.
And as we look at each of these strategies that you're going to see on the subsequent slides, with their page references, it contains a list of the responsible parties, the current status as it was as of 2015, of course, the recommended next steps and required resources, so it has a lot of good information in there about how the Affordable Housing Trust Fund should carry out these responsibilities. And what we tried to do for you on each one of these, as you see, is list the pages, it's frankly, even though the HPP is 160-some pages long, most of this is condensed to within a 30 to 35-page portion of the, of the HPP, so if anyone wants to go and review these, you'll be able to get right to the applicable page.
So again, a lot of this is about, you know, creating better access for people to housing and, and actually helping the creating of affordable housing, and working with the Planning Board and ZBA, you know, to do that, and our Housing Authority as well.
Right.
Anything to add, gentlemen, here? Yes, no? You know, conducting joint meetings with the Planning Board and ZBA, work with the Town Council and Planning Board to ensure proposed affordable housing meet all state requirements, to be included in the subsidized housing index, and prepare an inventory of properties potentially suitable for affordable housing, and I know that a number of you have mentioned a number of properties around town that are possibilities in this area, and hopefully some will be coming up in the next few months or years to talk about.
One interesting thing, Steve, that I noticed, since we're in the 70s, around page 73, that I wasn't really cognizant of is that up to 70% of the affordable units can be reserved for local, as local preference units for people with connection to the community.
I think it's important when you talk about these affordable housing opportunities in Wakefield, they're, you know, they're your teachers, your paraprofessionals, your police and fire, you know, people that work in the town, and it is a great way for them to really work and become invested in the community, and there's nothing like, you know, doing one of these lotteries where people go in and they actually win, and they come in and tell you, oh my God, Mr. Mayo, I actually won, and it's really fabulous, and then there's always a few that, oh, they didn't get it, and we hope to find them something else next time.
This is the only page that deals with zoning strategies, but if you look at the second one there, obviously when this was written in 2015, the town wasn't looking at existing zoning bylaws, which the Bylaw Review Committee is currently doing, but if we had an Affordable Housing Trust Fund, and we eventually have a Board of Trustees, the, according to the Bylaw Review Committee the other day, it's going to be a two-year evolution to look at zoning bylaws, so if there is an Affordable Housing Trust Fund and a Board of Trustees, conceivably, one of the members of the Board of Trustees could be a liaison to the zoning, to the Bylaw Review Committee and help with that endeavor. And then in the future, when we don't have a Bylaw Review Committee, as you know, we only have that every five years, years ending in two and a seven, you'd have the Affordable Housing Trust Fund that could, could keep working on zoning bylaws with the Planning Board.
Yeah, I think we talked about this, pursuing other opportunities for mixed use and transit-oriented development, the Planning Board, work with the Town Council and Planning Board to make suitable public property available for affordable housing, and look at other town-owned parcels. I think things that will be coming forward for discussion in the area in the future is, you know, once we've, once we're, we're sure we're not going to need the herd school for swing space, for the high school or anything like that, a great possibility of something that could be housing, and also we are coming ever so slowly and closer to looking at the property on Butler Ave, getting the DEP's final approval done, that's an area that I think really, I think this board can really look at and maybe come up with something there.
And in the 80s there, Steve, on page 82, there's mention of the contribution or bargain sale of land or buildings owned municipally owned that are not essential for municipal purposes, so there would be a lot of flexibility in terms of, you know, perhaps creating a situation where a developer could come in and perhaps be enticed to work to lower the cost of the units, one would hope.
And that's just what Councilor McLean talked about, working to, work with the developers or work with the Planning Board to support these infill housing developments, particularly the starter housing, special needs housing is nothing we haven't talked about, adaptive reuse, like the Lincoln School, I'll tell you, Lincoln School was a big controversy when it did close, I think, the older member here is shaking his head because he remembers like I do, but I think what a great, what a great facility that is for the town, it's a little different, it's current get living, but a lot of people live there, it works very well for people, and that was, you know, visionary people years ago that took a look at that. So again, this is all about creating affordable homeownership opportunities and then supporting them, and this is discussed in all of these, this...
We pointed that out because these two are discussed in a different portion of the HPP, an earlier portion, that's why you see the reference to pages 50 and then 49 to 51 below, that was the Priority Housing Needs Assessment portion of the HPP, but that tied in with later on, the other pages dealing with the recommendations for the trust fund, that's why we put this, this particular slide together. And then the main thing to point out here is, we recognize that the Housing Production Plan, the current document, is dated 2015, and in looking at the records, the Town Council did not edit it or change it at any time when it existed between 2015 and 2020, so the language in there is dated 2015, and we understand the need to make sure that, that if we create the trust fund, the trust fund, the Board of Trustees would have to look at the language in there, and then look, what's the current situation in Wakefield in 2023, and make whatever amendments to their responsibilities they deem appropriate.
Yeah, 32 years here, and I didn't know, I'd never heard the term legacy park, but it's in there, so I had to ask Steve, what's Legacy Park?
And just to make things easier for you all, we also prepared a three-page document, which is, was in your materials, because it's a little easier, it's synthesized, to read that, to understand what we just went through with all the slides, and basically, as you saw, the next steps, it's for us to take a vote, it's for us to take a vote of, do we want to forward this bylaw, draft bylaw to town meeting, and then have the town decide in May, as the legislative body, whether we want to adopt this bylaw, or we vote no, that we don't think that we need to send it forward to, to town meeting, but I think it's important that we take a vote, to make a decision on whether we should go forward with a Affordable Housing Trust Fund or not.
And thanks to Tom Mullen for drafting this bylaw and article at town meeting, which it does two things, it, Wakefield adopts Mass General Law's Chapter 44, Section 55(c) to establish the trust, and then it goes through and creates a bylaw, I personally felt that there are some communities that may just adopt the statute, but then there's no bylaw to look at, and I think there should be a bylaw on our books, on our website, that people can, can look at, we spent a lot of time, or Mike and Bob did a lot of time, talking about the membership of the trust and who they, who we thought might be part of that, and that'll be a great discussion here and/or at town meeting, but a couple of things that this does, is that it does require Town Council approval for a number of, number of items, as well as a two-thirds vote of the Board of Trustees, and that is...
That's in, that's, Section 70-5.
70-5, and we felt it, it important that items that really dealt with the sale or the purchase or of land should really be looked at very closely by both the trust and the Town Council. The other key thing is that the Town Council will create the Declaration of Trust should this pass town meeting.
Yeah, if I could just amplify a couple of things, you all had an opportunity to look at the draft bylaw, a lot of this language is from the statute, but what we'll point out, where we, the Town Council, have some flexibility, and we certainly welcome your input on this, is if you look at 70-2, which is membership, we came up with an idea of having nine voting members, and we specifically put in there somebody from the Town Council, the Planning Board, Council on Aging, Housing Authority, Finance Committee, and the Commission on Disabilities, now I'll tell you that the statute also allows the Town Administrator to be a voting member if we deemed it appropriate, we had extensive discussions with Steve, Mike and myself on this, and we collectively decided not to put the Town Administrator in as a voting member, but we specifically looked at these other, other parts of the community and thought it was important for them to be on the, have membership, but we also left three other members, three members at large. I go back to my experience on the Human Rights Commission, and when we got started in 2015, we had nine members, and then we ended up getting so busy that we had to actually come back to the Town Council and ask for additional members, if some of you may recall, I was on the HRC when I had to make that presentation to you all, so we thought starting out with nine was a good number, because this is going to be a busy Board of Trustees. The other section, as Steve indicated, where we specifically put language in is 70-4 on the Declaration of Trust, I will tell you that some communities have delegated that responsibility to the, to the Board of Trustees, we decided that it was important for the Town Council to retain that authority, that is where we will delineate what response, we just went through a litany of responsibilities on those slides, the Declaration of Trust is where we will delineate what responsibilities we think the, the Board will have, the way this will work, if this passes at town meeting in May, no bylaw is official until after the Attorney General's Office has looked at it, and that usually normally takes around three months, so if this passes at town meeting, that gives us an opportunity as a collective body over the summer to put the Declaration of Trust together, and then we can all decide what responsibilities we specifically think the Board of Trustees should have. The other one that Steve alluded to was 70-5, where we put in the two-thirds vote for many different subsections within 70-5, that was really, Steve, Steve knew that much better than, than we did, but we certainly agreed with his, his decision, if you take a look at his recommendation, if you take a look at the statute and you look at 75A, you'll say you don't have all the language from the statute in your Section 75A, and that's because the second clause in the, in the applicable section of that statute is for a community that's a CPA community, I got that one from Tom Mullen, so that's why that, if you compare this language in the bylaw with the state statute and you see that omission, that's because we're not a CPA community. The other one that we added, something that's not in the statute, was K, and if you look at 75-K, the second clause in there is language that Redding had, that we thought was good language to put into our particular, so I didn't want you to think that, gee, maybe you missed a section of the statute here, no, we purposely went through this and either omitted language or added language where we thought it was appropriate, and then Steve, if you can just talk about 70-6, because I think that was another one that was your recommendation.
Sure, 70-... Yeah, 70-6 is a little bit different, if the trust, if the, if the trustees were decide to embark on, one of my favorite methods of promoting housing and making housing affordable is a, is a soft second mortgage program, one of that is, is first-time home buyers will actually apply to the town, and I'm going way back 30 years ago, because I did a lot of this in my law practice, where the town actually gives the borrowers that qualify maybe 10, 15, $20,000 per uses a down payment and/or closing costs and things like that, and it's an actual lien on the property, okay, so the town will get their money back when the, you know, first-time home buyer sells or refinances, they'll get their money back, which is, which is great, so someone else can take advantage of it. But one thing that happens is that we would get a, a call would come in from the closing attorney, again, going back in my past days, geez, there's a second mortgage to the Wakefield Trust on this, I need it released for the closing, and the closing is, you know, next week, well, the Town Council doesn't meet, meet for, it's in, it's in July, right, and the Town Council's not going to meet broadly on this in a few days, the Board of Trustees might not meet right away to help that, so 70-6 just authorizes the Chair of the Board of Trustees to execute discharges and releases in those amount, for the amount given, and that's pretty standard, standard practice in there. The other thing that I wanted to, to point out here, that I really believe that this is a great way to promote and help homeownership and help, help people get into the market in Wakefield, the way that we, you know, it's been, it's been referenced that we do have some money that is available, the way that that, that becomes available is when someone buys a unit that is a subsidized housing unit, and it is, you know, they buy it, they live in it, they move on, they want to sell their unit, okay, let's use Heron Pond, for example, Heron Pond, one of the first 40B projects in town, there are people that are living there that bought their units, you know, at a, at a, at a reduced rate, you know, from the state, now they go to sell, it's 10 years later, they didn't hit a bonanza, they didn't hit a profit, they're not going to get the market rate, they're going to have to sell to another first-time home buyer, because that unit is in perpetuity, or for as long as the subsidy lasts, can only be sold to another qualified buyer, okay, great way of turning that over, really important, however, what did happen a little bit a few years ago, I haven't seen it happen in a long time, is that because of the market, because of rates, because of whatever was going on, the buyer, the owner could not find, after maybe six months, a qualified first-time home buyer to buy in there again, so they don't get a windfall, what happens is, the market, the property is unfortunately sold at a market rate, the owner then only gets what they, up to the level they could have gotten to be in the first-time home buyer level, and then that excess money comes back to the town to be used for housing purposes, so we do have, you know, some money, only took a few in that period of time to come in, that we could develop something or work with a developer to push this forward, or give second mortgages, and that's something that the trust and the, and the Town Council will be deciding, but I think the first step is to get, you know, this document on town meeting and give a much pithier discussion and presentation that we did tonight, and I, I think it's just a really good thing for the community going forward, and, you know, most, a lot of communities around us have it, and we, we kind of pick and chose from a number of them, and I think got what we thought was the best deal, so, I don't know, gentlemen, if you had anything else to add?
I think you covered it.
Well, thank you all for your work on this, thank you, Tom, for drafting this, very detailed, thank you for that presentation, any comments, Councilor Tynes?
Yeah, first of all, this is really excellent and thorough work, and thank you, Councilor McLean, Councilor Vincent, Mr. Mayo, Mr. Mullen, of course, always, for working on it, you know, I really appreciate the fact that we haven't just adopted the state bylaw, I think that was something we talked about the first time this was presented, it's been important for me to feel like we have, as a community, ownership over how we're using this tool that's at our disposal, and I think you've done a really nice job of laying that out in the bylaw that's proposed, and so I really applaud you for that. I also appreciate the, the Declaration of Trust provision and having that come back to the Town Council, because if this does get approved by town meeting, and I hope it does, you know, that is something that I want us to have a pretty detailed discussion on, because while I sort of appreciate the laundry list of things that are contained in the Housing Production Plan, I worry that it's too broad, both in terms of potentially giving the trusts some responsibilities that, you know, aren't necessarily appropriate given the responsibilities of the Town Council, the Planning Board, and other bodies, but also because I just think if you put a list of, you know, 15, 20 responsibilities to a trust, to any board, rather than trying to focus, you know, you get sort of lost in kind of analysis paralysis, and I think that we can do a lot to set a direction that focuses on, you know, home buyer assistance and rental assistance, that focuses on housing development, the creation of affordable units, and preservation of the units that are there, I think there's a lot we can do to make sure that it's a tighter set of responsibilities that I think achieves the aims that we need, without sort of tying up this, this trust board and a lot of discuss- and a lot of discussion around sort of strategic directions. So look forward to that discussion, but, you know, otherwise, I'm entirely supportive of this as written, and like I said, hope that, hope it's viewed favorably at town meeting.
One thing, if I could, Madam Chair, I want to point out, I thought, I think that the town administrator should definitely be supporting this group and working with the trustees on this, and really, I guess, being their admin, so to speak, in the town. But I don't think the town administrator should be a voting member on it. I think that should be made up of citizens with the support of the town administrator. Some communities have it that way, but I think the three of us talked about it and felt that that was more appropriate. Thank you.
Another questions, comments? Councilor Dennehy?
First, yeah, thank you for all of your hard work on this. This is really great, and so I just want to make sure that I'm understanding it, is that, thing is, is that any public property that we have, that we now are able to decide what we want to do with that in terms of creating affordable housing? And so if we wanted to do, you know, senior housing that we've talked about, that would be something that the trustees would discuss and vote on and that we, as council members, would weigh in on?
Yeah, I think that's the way that would work.
My counsel would also have a vote.
Would have a vote.
If we were to develop some place to sell housing, the way that that's, the way that it's drafted is it would need a two-thirds vote of the trustee, the trustees, and the vote of the town council.
Okay.
That's a real safeguard.
Yeah. And that's another very valid point. The reason we put in seventy-five, two-thirds vote of the Board of Trustees, is we really felt that we wanted to have a, not just a majority of the nine, but we wanted to have two-thirds of those nine agree to bring something that significant to us, but then we would have the final vote on that. So we changed that just last week from a majority to two-thirds.
And since we would have the vote, you know, on any property that's municipal property, I would expect there's, absolutely have to be collaboration between the trust and town council in terms of, okay, what is it we're planning to do, what is it that we want to do?
What's our priority?
To Councilor Chines' point, you know, I, there's a lot of material in here, but not all of it will probably apply. We should be responsible for paring it down and giving guidance, and they, you know, they also talk in the materials about an action plan. We may want to set out an action plan to give further guidance to the trust in addition to the Declaration of Trust, but that's for another day, fortunately.
Yeah.
Hopefully, that's for another month.
Okay, Councilor Vincent or Councilor McLean, can you, since this is your article proposal, can you please make a motion?
No, you go. You had the idea, so I wanted you to do it, and I wanted to second it. I don't know what to say.
Well, I always refer to Steve and Tom Mullen for verbiage.
I think you may want to move that the town sponsor this package as an article at town meeting.
I want to move as Steve stated.
Yeah, I'll second it.
Great. Any further discussion? All in favor? Six-zero unanimous, thank you. Thank you all for your work on that. We did article number nine. Moving on to article number ten, the Town Administrator Contract, excuse me. So I'm just going to give a little history, turn it over to Jonathan, but, you know, everyone knows that the town council is the chief executive office in the town. We are the chief policymaking agency, and that one of our duties, I think one of our most important duties is the appointment of our town administrator. Steve's current contract ends in June 2023, so late last year, I asked Councilor Chines and Councilor Vincent to be on the Town Administrator Contract Committee. I wanted to thank both of them, along with Tom Mullins and Sherry, for getting to this contract agreement. I'm going to turn to Councilor Chines now to talk a little bit about the process and the contract and the agreement we got to.
So I'm really happy to be speaking about this today. You know, this has been, I think, a great process and a great result, which I certainly am proud of, and want to thank, you know, Councilor Vincent for working with me on this, and as always, Mr. Mullen and Ms. Dalton for helping to kind of get this to the finish line. So just from a process standpoint, to remind members of the council, we had met back in October to kick off this process, you know, in executive session to talk about, you know, some of our goals as a council for the contract, and Bob and I used that as an opportunity to kick off a series of meetings with Steve, you know, to talk about sort of the council's perspective, hear Steve's perspective, you know, work through some areas where, you know, we wanted to really define out the direction that we wanted to go, and that resulted in the final agreement that we're presenting today for approval. A couple of things to highlight in the agreement, I know everyone has it and has read it, but, you know, three things I wanted to highlight is kind of key points. One is that it does keep Steve in the town administrator role for the next three years, and I think that's really important. You know, we've seen in some of our surrounding communities a lot of turnover in town administrators. There are a lot of new town administrators in the area, and some towns that will be looking for town administrators in the very near future. This is a very hard job to do, and so having an experienced, you know, high-performing individual like Steve in the role and being able to lock him in for a couple of years, I think is outstanding. The contract includes a cost of living adjustment that is intentionally set so that it is consistent with our collective bargaining agreements, you know, so that the approach that we take to any of our union negotiations from a salary perspective does carry forward to the town administrator as well, and again, we thought that was important from a consistency perspective. And the contract also includes something that I'm really excited about, which is a performance management process that is well documented, includes some very specific goals for the town administrator, and I think a really robust process for us collectively as a body with the town administrator to share feedback and talk about our priorities for the year ahead. I think we've done that historically in a more informal way, but we thought it was important to formalize that so that we have, you know, really an example of best practice that we can apply elsewhere. Going through the process, just saying sort of on a personal level, working through this with Steve, I mean, it becomes clear, you know, the integrity that Steve brought to the process, his commitment to the community and his commitment to this role was really clear, and just the creativity and thoughtfulness in working with Bob and I on what we've put together really shines through in the process. I negotiate a lot of contracts in my professional life. Sometimes they are not pleasant experiences, but I really think a good negotiation is one where, you know, you come out of it at a place where, you know, both parties or all parties involved believe that we've come to a really good outcome, and I have confidence in that, and that's because of, I think, the partnership we have with Steve. So with that, I'd like to make a motion to...
Yeah, go ahead.
No, I'd just like to make a motion and then want to make sure, but I'd like to make a motion to, for the town council to approve the negotiated agreement with Mr. Mayo for a renewal term of 2023 through 2026.
Second.
Thank you, Councilor Vincent.
Councilor Vincent, I also want to make sure you have a chance to...
Yes.
...add as well.
I did, I said second.
So I'll take chair prerogative and go first, and then ask everyone else to go on. So, Steve, you're going to be uncomfortable for a little bit, so I just want to start the conversation and say thank you for all your work over the years, but especially the last three years. Everything that happened during the pandemic was new, and we needed a town administrator who was resilient and adaptable and got our town through it. We've come out on the other side of the pandemic even stronger. Personally, you've been a mentor and a friend to me and all the other new counselors new to this role, from learning how to do Zoom meetings to special ballot questions to a triple-A bond rating every year. You've led our town to extraordinary levels. We've also partnered with surrounding municipalities in creative and groundbreaking ways. The team that you've built has made Wakefield a force in Massachusetts. Other towns are following our lead, whether banning plastic bags to expanding our Health and Human Services Department, other towns are looking to see what we do. I'm really grateful personally for you deciding to stick around and to continue to make Wakefield better and brighter. The next few years are going to be crucial, and I'm so excited that you've decided to stay. And I just want to say, I know that this is not a solo decision, so I want to thank your family and particularly Jean for agreeing to this contract. So here's just a little token for you and Jean for agreeing to remain Team Wakefield.
Thank you.
So you can, you can, you can show it later.
Absolutely.
Fine, okay. So I just, those are on behalf of me as Chair and thanking you to agreeing to this contract, and I will, I will go down if anyone wants to say anything, so Councilor Dennehy?
Sure. Thank you, thank you. Yes, I, ditto to everything that Councilor just said, and I do really appreciate all of your hard work, particularly watching Wakefield during the pandemic, that leader, the leadership that was shown through your leadership was really extraordinary. I don't think that it could have gone any better in terms of delivering. I remember getting the masks dropped off on my doorstep, which was really amazing. The updates that the community updates on the COVID rates and the guidance that the town showed was amazing, and I'm really fortunate to be serving on town council under, you know, your leadership on that, and really appreciate all of your efforts, and I'm learning a lot from you, so I really appreciate that, and I look forward to continuing working with you.
Councilor Dombrowski?
Well, Steve, as you know, I love revenue generating positions. And I'll say that, as much as you're paid a salary, you actually are a revenue generating position for the town. You have saved this town, at this point, millions upon millions of dollars, from the triple-A bond rating to your incredible diligence in going through the budget, and it matters. It matters to every taxpayer in this community. And more, I think equally important, you've just been an incredible member of this community in every way. I mean, you bleed Wakefield, and it shows every day. A lot of people don't see a lot of the behind the scenes, obviously, they see us on camera here every couple of weeks, but your accessibility by phone, by text, by email, you're there, you're prompt, you're responsive, you're thorough, and I know from speaking with a lot of folks in other communities, how much of a force you are in that you are really the dean of this entire region, and so many other town administrators or town managers look up to you, look to you for guidance, you have been their guide, you're the subject matter expert in everything municipal government, and it matters, and we're fortunate to have you because everyone else wants you, but we get to have you every day, so we're really fortunate for that. And I think that this contract, too, is a representation of your character in that it's a very principled way of working out the numbers, and you were clear with us from the beginning that you were not going to be an exception, and you wanted to have us apply the same approach that you applied in all of your negotiations with the various, you know, bargaining units, and that matters, and I think it's important for people to realize that, that, you know, there are opportunities, there are some that are higher paid than you and don't perform at your level, and it was important for you that we did things the right way from your perspective, and so I really appreciate your principled leadership. It's just, you know, the latest example of a litany that I could offer, but on a personal level, I could not be more appreciative of all that you have provided in terms of your leadership, in terms of your service, in terms of your commitment, in terms of your friendship, and it is an incredible, you know, opportunity to think that, you know, depending on how the election comes out, I could perhaps spend another three years working with you, but at a minimum, as a resident of the town, I'm incredibly thankful for your service. Thank you.
Councilor McLean?
When I heard Councilor Dombrowski talking about revenue, I was, I had this picture of you out putting tickets on. We don't agree all the time, but you know I respect the work that you do, and I look forward to two more years, because that's what I have, two more years of hopefully productive relationship. And I am appreciative that you have kept your contract in line with the other union contracts. I think that's leaning from the top, and that's a message to be sent out to the community, and I hope others are listening. Thank you.
Councilor Vincent?
Thanks, Madam Chair. I do spend a considerable amount of time down at Town Hall, and what I said earlier...
I've been hearing about that.
About how, about how, what kind of a commanding officer he is. It's my personal observations of how he treats his staff, how his staff, the reputation he has with his staff, and you don't always find that, going back to a military setting. And so when I give him a compliment, like he's one of the best commanding officers that I've seen, and that's going back to my 26-year military career, I really say that. I won't say those kind of things unless I really believe in them. I also appreciate, as a new member of the town council, the patience that you have given to me, because we do talk quite a bit, helping me understand a lot of the nuances about how town government works, which is wholly different from the experience I had in the service. And I think when we worked on the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, as I left your office one day, I gave you a compliment in that, and your son's in the Coast Guard, so you understood where I was coming from, and I said, this was a really rewarding experience working on this project together. It reminded me of working on the wardroom on an aircraft carrier, with that kind of camaraderie and that kind of level of understanding of trying to move a particular project forward. And I just think that you have done a superb job, and I, every day, I thoroughly enjoy working with you. Thank you.
Can I just add one more?
Yes.
I just have to say, too, is that your response rate is really impressive, is how quickly you respond, and sometimes I'll just, I'll send out an email on the weekend not expecting to get a response, and you always respond, which I don't expect, because I do want you to have, you know, your time away, but always have been so impressed with that, so. And Sherry, too. Sherry's very quick to respond.
At all hours.
At all hours, yes.
So I do, Councilor Smith Galvin is on a plane right now, was unable to join here, but she did send some remarks that I hope that can just be included in the meetings, and just to read, these are Julie's words, "Steve's unparalleled knowledge of our town's daily workings, deep relationships with local and state officials, and attention to fiscal detail has positioned Wakefield as a leader among Massachusetts towns. Whether it is managing a pandemic or fielding resident input, Steve is respectful, informed, and open to feedback. I look forward to building on his past work to continue building a stronger Wakefield." Councilor Chines?
Yeah, I could keep going on. I think we've embarrassed you enough. No, but again, really appreciate, Steve, your partnership in this process, and am so glad to be able to continue working with you, just for the benefit of the council. So, you know, our next steps, obviously, are hopefully we will approve the contract today based on the comments. I feel pretty confident that we're going to prevail in that vote. We will then actually kick immediately off into our performance review process for the year that we worked through and negotiated in this process. So we'll be working through that really over the next couple of months between now and the end of April, so appreciate everyone's work on that, and appreciate, Steve, your work as well on meeting with all of us as part of that process.
There's just one other piece, too. The contract, I don't know if, I don't think I have a copy of it yet, but there is a signature line for your wife Jean to sign as well.
Yeah.
Just so we're clear, because we recognize she's committing...
That may be a little bit more trouble.
Right, she's committing as much as you are to the next three years, and we're incredibly appreciative of her sacrifices that she's making to better our town.
So why don't we take, why don't we take the vote, and then we'll let you speak, Steve? But let's, so there's a motion that's been seconded, all in favor, unanimous, proudly. Thank you.
Thank you for the continued confidence of the board. I've always said that this is a real labor of love, and I have a great team, and really, they work really hard, they care, they care about the town a lot, they care about each other, and, you know, Tom and I have been together for a long time, Sherry and I have worked together for a long time, Kevin Gill, John McCarthy, you know, Rick Stinson, and now Joe Conway, I don't want to forget anybody, Amy Forziati and Karen in Personnel, Jen and Erin, who have just joined us and have really been part of the team, Victor, I mean, Dan McGrath, the chiefs, the deputy chiefs. Am I forgetting anybody? Am I going to get in trouble? Sherry?
Betsy.
Betsy, yes. Well, gee, I work for Betsy, so really, I can't say that. No, but they, we are so blessed to have this team of people that really care, and they care about the town, they want the town to be as... They want the town to be as, as good as it can. And they take real pride in that, and I take real pride in them. So happy to do it, happy to continue. The pandemic was really something, but that's really when it showed how this group came together. Tom Walsh, I forgot Tom Walsh. We did together, you know, people coming in and stuffing the masks in the bags, how we're masked, you know, because of, we didn't know. And really, you know, we were one of the first ones out that continued meeting. We adopted into the Zoom right away. We did inspections. We kept money flowing. I love the revenue. Some communities around us didn't do an inspection for a year and didn't issue building permit in a year. Did things still get built? Yes. They just didn't get inspected, and they just didn't, they didn't get the revenue for it. So great team. I know that I left some people out, and I apologize. They work really hard. Sherry does work really hard. She's 24/7, she's available, and she answers those things right away and can find things on, like this. Do you remember when we did this?
Yeah.
And she'll find this like in a jiffy. So I do thank you, I thank the board, and enough, let's move on. We've got work to do.
Well, thank you. We will, we will move on.
You got to show us what you got.
It's Team Wakefield for you and Jean.
Oh, Wakefield, that's perfect, yeah. Thank you.
I know you have a, you know, a lack of Wakefield stuff.
I have a lack of Wakefield paraphernalia, yeah.
Okay, we will, we will move on. Item number 11, licenses.
Madam Chair, move to approve the 2023 Class II renewal for VACP Group LLC.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye, unanimous, great.
Move to approve a one-day liquor license for Happy Hostess at Your Service for an event at the library on April 29, 2023.
Second.
This is for Blossoms at the Beeb. BB? Yep, sorry. All in favor? Aye, unanimous, great, thank you. Item 12, donations.
Move to accept and expend a gift or gifts to the council on aging in the amount of $230 from various donors with thanks. And Ann is going to-
Second.
All in favor? Aye, great, thank you.
Move to accept and expend a gift or gifts to the library in the amount of $370 from various donors with thanks.
Second.
All in favor? Aye, thank you very much. Number, item 13, warrants. Counselor Vincent?
Oh, yeah, must be 10 o'clock.
First warrant is $6.7 million. Most of that's from the treasurer, that's MWRA assessment, public works, that included paving supplies, trash, water mains, and light department expenditures. That was warrant number 30. Warrant number 32 was $7.1 million. Once again, major expense there really was the light department expenses. That was more than half of that figure. Warrant number 34, $6.388 million. Once again, most of that was public work expenses, group insurance, and also treasurer for normal town expenses. And then the last one was for only $7,380.33. That was, you'll see that's for veterans, that was payout for some of the benefits that our recipients receive for veterans. That's it, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. Item number 14, approval of minutes.
Move to approve the February 27, 2023 Town Council meeting minutes.
Second.
All in favor? Aye, great.
And move to approve the February 27, 2023 Town Council Executive Session Meeting Minutes.
Second.
A second, sorry.
All in favor? Aye. Oh, great. Announcements. Counselor McLean?
I think it was last Saturday. As much as I love the Friends of BB Library, boy, can they pick a weather day. They picked the negative 10-degree day that we had a cancellation, and then we had a nice stormy book drop-off over at The Herd, I think it was last Saturday morning. But it went very well, and people showed up, and they had everything boxed, and we got to lug some books. And I think that they'll have a couple more collections, I believe, April, May, so we'll keep you posted.
Thank you. Counselor Dennehy?
I just wanted to thank everybody who came out to vote. It was, from what I hear, Election Day went really smoothly. So thanks again to our town clerk's office, Betsy Sharon and her staff for a great Election Day and the opportunity to be able to vote absentee for those of us who weren't in town on that day. That went, that was effortless as well. So, and congratulations on the new high school project. I think it's going to be a real, a real groundbreaking opportunity to educate our students in the way that they deserve to be educated. So I'm so excited about the new building project and looking forward to seeing that building get built as soon as possible.
Thank you. Counselor Chimes?
So first of all, ditto to Counselor Dennehy's comments. Very excited and really appreciative to everyone who came out, town clerk, and also the DPW and the police department. I mean, those were some long days for their teams as well. I, you know, now that we've kind of gone from planning to starting to execute the building, I did want to take the opportunity to thank and recognize the members of the Permanent Building Committee and the School Building Committee. So there's been an enormous amount of work to get us to the point where we had something for the town to vote on, both at town meeting and this past weekend in the election. There is also an enormous amount of work as we move ahead to actually do the architectural design, do the engineering design, and then build the thing. So, you know, this is a group of people that are not going to be resting over the next, you know, three-plus years. They've been incredibly dedicated to this project, have done some great work, and really want to recognize them for some, some just incredible work so far. And thank you in advance for everything that you're going to continue to do. I'd say the same would go for Tim O'Brien, the Facilities Director for the Public Schools. He was at the vote with his family early in the morning to vote, and then there at the end of the day to see how it turned out. He's not getting a whole lot of rest over the next few years, but I know is probably pretty excited about the project moving ahead. So thanks to everyone for that. Otherwise, just very briefly, wanted to mention that I do have office hours tomorrow. Actually, I should say tomorrow, weather permitting, from 6:00 to 7:30 at the library. That may, that may change depending on what kind of snow we get, but if the weather looks good, I'll be there.
Thank you. Counselor Dombrowski, do you have an event to tell us about?
I do, yes. Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to remind everyone that this Wednesday is the White Ribbon Campaign Event on BB Plaza, Library Plaza at 12 noon. And it'll be a great opportunity for those to come out and support Wakefield Alliance Against Violence and to take the pledge to stand up against violence against women and girls. As many of you might know, March is White Ribbon Month, not just across Wakefield, but across the country and around the world. And so it's a really important opportunity to come up and stand, stand out and, and show your support. And we have a lot of members from the high school who will be present. We have a musical performance as well, and a lot of town officials and leaders taking part, so I hope you can join us. Again, it's Wednesday, 12 noon on Library Plaza. And if the weather does not cooperate, we'll just move it inside, but I'm confident we'll be able to have it outside. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Vincent.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Military Veteran Coffee Social, the monthly social, will be at the Yacht Club on Linda Road on Saturday, March 18th at 10:00 in the morning. And I think the Council on Aging has postponed their St. Patrick's Day party from Wednesday, March 15th to Friday at noon because of the weather that Counselor Dombrowski says is not going to be here.
Wednesday, fine. That is my accurate forecast, yes.
Thank you. Sherry or Tom, anything to add?
I'm all set, thank you.
Steve and I have talked, and you will hear at the next, at your next meeting, a proposal to revise your public comment period policy. I have never liked the idea of public comment. I'll tell you, I'm a Scrooge about that, but I think most of you are going to join me in feeling like that after you hear the tale of the town of Southborough, where they had a policy that required courteous and respectful discussion. And a not-so-courteous woman in the community got up, accused the board of selectmen of breaking the law, and twice referred to the chair as a Hitler. The chair enforcing the policy told her to stop and threatened to have her removed if she did not stop. She sued. The Supreme Judicial Court has held that under the state constitution, one cannot be compelled to be courteous or respectful. The most that the town could require is that speaker be orderly and peaceable. And allowed the case to go forward and held, and you'll be interested to know this, Madam Chair, that the chair could be held personally liable for any damages. So I'm going to take a look, and Steve and I have already started taking a look at the policy that this board adopted some time ago, which, like almost all those policies, now has to be revisited.
Anything to not make the chair liable would be appreciated. I spend a lot of time in Southborough, my cousins live there, so I spent a lot of time in that town, and that was a wild court decision. So we look forward to that conversation. Thank you.
So much so.
Yes, and, and, and we'll discuss this, but it is about public comment period. Our, our expectation of others who are on the agenda or speaking to each other with respect and, and courtesy, that is not public comment period. Tom's like, I don't know about that, but we, we have, we always hold each other up to that standard. Just, just to, just a couple announcements from me. I just want to congratulate the HRC on their annual back-in-person International Women's Month Day event last week. It was a really great event with a great panel, including my colleague Ann Dennehy, who was one of the panelists. Glad that that event is back in person after three years. Echo what everyone says, thank you, everyone who went out to vote. There's still a lot more work to be done, but it was a step in the right direction. Thank you, Counselor Vincent, about the Veterans Coffee Hour. I'm encouraging everyone, as we, as we had a lot of conversations about outreach to veterans, if you know a veteran in town, tell them about this coffee hour. The Yacht Club at 10 o'clock on Saturday, it's great to meet other veterans, learn about some of the programs and services we provide in town. So just share that if you can. And lastly, just to let my colleagues and Steve, particularly Steve, know Ramadan starts on March 23rd, which means your town chair will not have caffeine and food throughout the day, and so please excuse any, any headaches that I get. Yes, yes, please, please, please pardon me if I get a little angry. That's the word I'm looking for, I guess. Anything else that anyone wanted to announce, Steve?
Just a couple of very quick things, I know the hour's late. After the high school vote came in, I was at Tonos with John McCarthy. John and I were at Tonos, and once the vote came in, we called Peter Frazier on the phone Saturday night at 8:30. He picked up the phone, so we're already kind of going into, how do we do that with the changing rate environment? So I thought that was interesting. And on Sunday, although it's online earlier, the Globe North section will have a little snippet on the high school, the high school vote. I talked to John Laidler this morning, and I've known, John's been the reporter there for a long time, and that will be the last Globe North, or whatever they're calling it now, section in the Globe. They're, they're eliminating it from there. You know, so I said, I loved seeing what the towns were doing, you saw the snippet, they're getting rid of that feature in the Globe. So I thought that was kind of interesting.
Yeah. They, they actually did the story six years ago of our plastic bag ban.
Yeah.
That was in the Globe North.
So, yeah, that's it.
Well, we'll look forward to reading that this weekend.
This big.
Item number 16, matters not anticipated for the agenda. Got nothing. Item number 17, adjournment. Our next regular 10 council meeting is Monday, March 27th at 7:00 PM. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
And all in favor? I thank you all, meeting adjourned.